Whoever. Oh, hello. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We are going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I am going to ask all my colleagues to please unmute and join me. Pledge allegiance. The flag. And the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan if she could please call the role.
Mr. James.
President.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Rivera.
Present.
Robinson.
Present.
Mr. Tran.
Present.
Mr. O'Neal.
I'm sorry, caught me in the middle of a cough. I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver Davila.
Present.
All members are present with the exception of Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's meeting is being shared live on Zoom, and it will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and also on YouTube. For those of you who are joining us on Zoom or at a later date, you can find tonight's meeting documents posted on the school committee's webpage, under the January 27th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American sign language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe that you'll find at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon to select the language of your preference. In order to access this feature, you must update to the latest version of Zoom, and you can do that by visiting support.zoom.us. Our Spanish interpreters are Juan and Randolph. If you could please introduce yourselves and invite our Spanish-speaking audience to switch their Zoom channel into Spanish.
Certainly, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am one of the interpreters assigned for this meeting. I'll be doing simultaneous interpretation with working with my colleague, Mr. Randolph. We will be taking 30-minute intervals for that purpose. What I'll do, I'll explain, Spanish speakers, how to access the feature for interpretation. Muy buenas noches para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy uno de los interpretes simultáneos asignados para esta cita. Vamos a estar trabajando en intervalos de 30 minutos con mi colega, el señor Randolph. Para aquellas personas que necesitan el servicio de la interpretación, la forma como ustedes van a accesar al servicio de interpretación, miran la parte baja de la pantalla, van a localizar un globo redondo que tiene la función de la interpretación. Tiene que seleccionar el idioma español para que puedan escuchar nuestra interpretación simultánea. Aquellas personas que no vean el globo que estén utilizando un teléfono celular van a mirar los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte de arriba de la pantalla a la derecha y seleccionar Language Interpretation, o la interpretación en español, para poder accesar. Aquellas personas que no logren verlo después de hacer esto tienen que bajar la versión más actualizada de Zoom en su computador o en su tableta. En ese caso, van al www.zoom.us, raya inclinada, download. Muchas gracias a todos. Thank you very much, Mr. Randolph. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Randolph Dominguez. I am going to be one of your simultaneous Spanish interpreters. I will now introduce myself to the Spanish-speaking audience. Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Randolph Dominguez. Voy a ser uno de los interpretes simultáneos de esta noche. Como le dijo mi colega Juan Bernal, vamos a estar trabajando en intervalos de 30 minutos. Muchas gracias. Y disfruten la interpretación.
Gracias. Our Mandarin interpreters, Tina Wang and Wei Li, if you could please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Our Cantonese interpreters are Anna C. and Terry Yin. If you could please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our Vietnamese interpreters are Vi Phong Lee and Du Yan Tru. If you could please introduce yourself and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese.
My name is Du Yan Tru. 谢谢各位，我是通缉片女的。谢谢。Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, hi, everyone. My name is Vi Phong Lee. I'm the other Vietnamese interpreter. 谢谢各位，我姓V。昨天晚上。谢谢。去 Zoom 来点击 Zoom 谢谢。
Thank you. And also, if we could have our ASL interpreters introduce themselves. Mr. Hirschberg, Ms. Kuznetzky, and Ms. Kuhn.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kuznetzky. I'm an ASL interpreter.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Kuhn, and I'm an ASL interpreter.
And I'm Michael Hirschberg, and I'm the third ASL interpreter.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our interpreters for assisting us this evening. I don't think it's a small feat to have all this translation and checking in on school districts across the country. We have really one of the best transinterpreters and systems now. And we're going to continue to grow that. I know there's some languages that are missing, and we're trying to work on those. So if everyone can please have patience. But again, I just think it's really important to note that across the country, this is very trailblazing. And I really thank some of our members who kept bringing this up, as well as our superintendent, who we talked about this in one of our first meetings when I became chair. So thank you to all the interpreters. We're now going to activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. And I'd like to remind everyone, if you could please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. And I want to thank everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for both public comment periods closed today at 4:30 PM. Ms. Sullivan will remind everyone about the public comment rules again later on. But here is a quick reminder for those of you who have signed up to testify. If you could please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you use to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. From this point forward, we will be asking all speakers to also identify what neighborhood they reside in along with stating their name and affiliation. This will give our members a sense of what we are hearing from our neighborhoods. This is also practice across all public bodies in Boston, and we thank you for your cooperation. Before we move on to our agenda, I would like to say a few words about the important work the committee is doing to shape the focus of our work for the next five years. On January 20th and on January 21st, the committee held a two-day public retreat on priority setting and effective governance practices. To strengthen the committee's focus on student outcomes, we drafted a set of goals and guardrails to guide our work. I'm going to read our goals and our guardrails. Our first goal is that BPS will create the conditions for students to arrive in grade three, ready to thrive in school, by ensuring that the percentage of K-2 students who meet or exceed grade level expectations on the reading comprehension and writing assessment at the end of the year will increase from X in June 2020 to X in June 2026. Our second goal. BPS will cultivate the linguistic and learning assets of students by ensuring that the percentage of students who are English learners who demonstrate at least X percent of growth on the ELL access test will increase from X percent in June of 2020 to X percent by June of 2026. Our third goal. BPS will cultivate the linguistic and learning assets of students by ensuring that the percentage of students with disabilities who demonstrate at least X percent of growth on English SGP's and who are in full or partial inclusion will increase from X percent in June of 2020 to X percent by June of 2026. Our next goal. BPS will educate students to be able to critically reason, discern, and demonstrate academic mastery of math, science, and literacy so that the percentage of students in seventh and eighth grade who perform at the proficient level in reading, math, and science will increase from X percent in June of 2020 to X percent by June of 2026. And our last goal is BPS will support students graduating with the agency to direct their futures by ensuring that the percentage of graduates who have, one, completed MYCAP and, two, either an industry CTE certification, IB credential, score three or above on an AP exam, or 20 hours of dual credit will increase from X percent of June of 2020 to X percent by June of 2026. We also talked about guardrails that we wanted to follow. And these are all related to our strategic plan. All of these are tied back to the 2020 to 2025 strategic plan. And I won't read all of those, but I wanted to give everybody a sense that our guardrails are really around making sure that there is community voice, making sure that there's student, that we honor student voice as well. And we're not done with them. These are very much draft goals and guardrails. In our next steps, we are going to hold a series of community stakeholder listening sessions to receive input from the community on these draft goals and guardrails. As I say, these are work in progress. They will be added to, amended, as we meet with the community. We've already heard some feedback on pieces, and so we'll come back and we will share those. But we are holding seven sessions in February, including a student session that would be co-hosted by BSEC. And each of these sessions will be co-facilitated by two committee members, and interpretation will be provided. I want to be clear about what these sessions are and what they are not. These sessions are really to gather feedback from our community on the goals and guardrails that will guide our work for the next five years. They're not forums to discuss current issues such as school reopening or other such matters. If you'd like to discuss those issues in the context of getting a resolution to a current issue, there are other venues for that. But to help improve our present, we have to make a plan for our future, and that's what we aim to do during these listening sessions. We really look forward to these conversations with the community, and we hope that you will be able to join us. These dates are posted on the committee's webpage, We're now going to move on to the approval of minutes from our January 13th, January 20th, our January 13th meeting, our January 20th retreat, and our January 21st retreat. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to this motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the role?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We are now going to move on to the superintendent's report, and I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd like to get right into my superintendent's report this evening. We're adopting a slightly more interesting format, as you can tell, and that will add some photos and images and also the data that I had spoken about earlier. During my superintendent's reports, moving forward, I'd like to provide some important data points to affirm our commitment to transparency and also to ensure we remain focused on student outcomes. I want to remind the community that we have a public-facing dashboard that we launched on January 8th, available at bostonpublicschools.org/dashboard. Just want to briefly mention some of the data we are reporting. You'll see here on the overview tab that the dashboard shows the breakdown of hybrid versus remote learning across the district, student and staff attendance, student online participation, the number of students with BPS Chromebooks, and a lot more. You'll see, for example, that our average daily attendance rate is 90% and our students' daily online activity rate is 87%. The dashboard also provides some context for these figures. For example, when we're fully in-person, the BPS average daily attendance rate ranged from 91.9% to 92.9% between 2014, 15, and 2019, 20. The information here is updated weekly and is disaggregated by school, demographics, and by other groups. While this provides with important information and data, it helps us also to identify trends and also allows us to give direct support and services to our students and families, but it doesn't paint the entire full story of remote and hybrid learning. We have included some vignettes on the landing page to provide more information on the wonderful teaching and learning happening in our schools. And I can't thank our teachers and our school leaders enough for the incredible hard work that they are doing each and every day. So be sure to go through all of our links on the left and use the drop-down menus to further disaggregate and sort the data. I hope you and the public find this useful. We hope to continue to expand this dashboard as we continue our focus on transparency in reporting and also our renewed focus on specific metrics and outcome data. We also want to continue to report our positive COVID-19 cases, and we are reporting those to DUCI as well as the Boston Health Commission and our individual school communities and the larger community abroad. And we're doing that through this dashboard available at bostonpublicschools.org/coronavirus. Health services will go into greater detail during their update, but I wanted to provide our most recent numbers. School year to date, we have had 151 positive cases for students and staff who have accessed our schools for in-person teaching and learning. Today, we have had 25 students and 126 staff members across our 125 buildings who have accessed our buildings and who have received a positive COVID test. I want to now just shift quickly to some information just about the events of the past week, which turned the corner here in the United States as we watched the 46th president, Joe Biden, be sworn into office. We also watched the glass ceiling shatter as Vice President Kamala Harris became the first Black American, the first Asian-American, and the first woman to serve as Vice President. This was an incredible moment for me to see personally as a Black woman, but all I could think about was how important of a moment it was for our young people, our young women, our young girls everywhere, especially Black girls, Asian girls, and biracial girls. We all know the power of representation, and seeing Kamala Harris place her hand on that Bible was a moment that many girls will remember for the rest of their lives. I was equally inspired by poet laureate Amanda Gorman and her moving poem, "The Hill We Climb." I shared a clip of the video in my check-in to staff this week and strongly encouraged everyone to watch. I was so happy to learn that Ms. Gorman performed her poetry alongside students from Orchard Gardens, K8, at a community event in 2018. I'm also so proud of our educators who facilitated thoughtful discussions about the inauguration, particularly in the context of our recent violence in DC and the divisive rhetoric that has become all too common for our young people to hear. I saw a great story about Canal Etienne, history teacher at Snowden, who held office hours on the morning of the inauguration so that his ninth graders could come discuss this historic day. Additionally, at Boston Latin School, students and head of school Rachel Garrett put together a truly moving tribute to our Vice President, showing us all that this moment has been and that this moment is actually bigger than any one of us. These are just some of the examples of our educators stepping into this moment and educating our students about the past, our current events, as we look into and ahead for brighter. Now let me shift to some new highlights here, an educational opportunity that was given to some of our BPS seniors through the Posse Foundation. The Posse Foundation is a nonprofit educational organization that recruits, identifies, and trains individuals with extraordinary leadership potential. Posse scholars receive a full tuition leadership scholarship at the Posse Partner College or University. I'm pleased to announce that 40 young leaders from 12 BPS schools are the recipients of the annual Posse Foundation Scholarship. Here you see two of them, from Frendway High School, Judith Guzman and Raymond Asun Cian, Baptist staff. These inspiring high school seniors have been selected for their academic achievement and proven leadership. They have earned four-year full tuition scholarships from Bryn Mawr College, Bucknell University, Center College, and Union College. They will attend these colleges together in supportive cohorts of 10. Pictured now are our Posse Scholars from various BPS high schools who will all attend Center College next year. These scholars join a network of Posse Scholars that now exceeds 10,000 members who represent the rich diversity of this nation. That diversity is much needed at the decision-making tables where our country's most difficult challenges can be addressed. The effect of Posse alumni reverberates around our city and our nation. I'm so BPS proud of these resilient and fortitude, especially during the past year of constant change and tumultuous times. I cannot wait to see and hear their impact stories as they represent BPS and continue to carry the torch as the young leaders we so desperately need more and ever. Yesterday, I was pleased to join the surprise celebration at Tech Boston Academy for guidance counselor Jessica Descartes. Jessica was presented with the 2021 School Year of the Year Award by Massachusetts School Culture Association and Nora Bernaza, school head of schools. In the past year, I have mentioned the passing of two Tech Boston Academy staff members in my superintendent's report, co-headmaster Keith Love and Nurse Susan Arase. The TBA family has also sadly lost other members of their community in the last year as well. Jessica Descartes has been a pillar of strength for the TPA community this year and for the past six years. It was an honor to be there in person as she was presented the award, joined by her brother, her colleagues, and her students. Jessica mentioned that when she talks about her kids, she talks about her students. The love in the room was palpable, as I couldn't help myself but get emotional. This has been such a difficult year, and every day I'm blown away by the love and support our educators and staff provide for our students and their families. I want to say a big congratulations to Jessica and the whole TBA community. I also want to take a moment to recognize Boston Latin School cross-country and track and field coach Mike Meeger, who announced that he's retiring after 50 years. Of course, we have many wonderful employees who will retire, and I wish I could recognize them all. But after 50 years as a coach, that's something quite remarkable. Mike is a BPS veteran and worked at the JFK Elementary as well as Charlestown High for 24 years. He's also a former BPS student and ran track during his time at Boston Technical High School. Mike clearly never forgot where he came from, continuing to give back to Boston youth for over a half a century. I want to personally thank Mike for your commitment to our students. Tomorrow, Thursday, January 28th, my team and I will host a virtual meeting to discuss reopening. The meeting will be on Zoom from 5:30 to 7:00 PM and will feature interpretation services in Arabic, Cantonese, Haitian Creole, Mandarin, Somali, Spanish, and Vietnamese. Visit bostonpublicschools.org, and you will see it on the calendar on the main page. If you're unable to join, we will post a recording of the meeting on our reopening website. We're also excited to enter our next phase of reopening and welcome an additional 7,700 students back to our school buildings. Our buildings are ready, and my team is ready to give you further details shortly in our reopening update. We've been communicating with families at the district level, and schools have been reaching out to families to confirm their learning models. To request a change to your learning model, for example, from hybrid to remote, families can either contact their school or complete the request form available in 10 different languages at bostonpublicschools.org/reopening. I want to remind families that we need to have the form turned in by Friday, January 29th. Again, if families have any questions, they can contact their school or their teacher, or they can call the BPS Family Helpline at 617-635-8873. Finally, I'd like to give a brief update on the school safety working group. As you know, we passed policy on data privacy for students' data privacy back this fall, and it is now And it is now, I'm going to be updating you on the working group that is part of that policy change. This group is charged with further discussing issues related to the recently established policy regarding preparing and sharing student incident reports and other student information with the Boston Police Department. I will share reports with the working group about the district's implementation of this policy, and the working group will make recommendations to the school committee. I will announce membership at the next school committee meeting, which is required by the policy. And I will announce the following membership. The working group shall be comprised of twelve members representing the following groups: A BPS student, who is nominated by the Immigration, Youth, or Community Advocacy Organization, with preference given to a student who attends a school that has historically experienced a high volume of arrests or incidents reports; A parent or guardian chosen by the Citywide Parent Council; A member of the Boston Special Education Parent Advisory Council Sped PAC; A teacher chosen by the Boston Teachers Union; A school administrator with an assigned safety service employee chosen by the superintendent; A representative from an immigration, youth, or advocacy organization chosen by the school committee; A representative from the BPS Office of Opportunity Gaps; A representative from the BPS Operational Leader Team or other BPS Central Office Representative with responsibility for advising school administrators on code of conduct; A representative from the BPS Department of Safety Services; An individual who is not an employee of the City of Boston with expertise in law enforcement and school safety laws and regulations chosen by the school committee; and two representatives from the superintendent's Student Data Working Group, which made recommendations on this policy. And those names will be nominated by the working group. Again, I will share those names at our next meeting. And that's it for my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. I will now open it up to questions or discussion from committee members. If you could raise your hand virtually or in your box. Yes, Vice Chair O'Neill, please go ahead.
Superintendent, thank you for your report. I appreciate you showing the dashboard information. That's very helpful to see, including what you've done about COVID, reporting COVID cases and cases by individual schools. So thank you for that transparency. And I just have to congratulate those Posse Scholars. What amazing news. And did you say forty of our students were selected as Posse Scholars?
That's correct.
That's fantastic. Amazing young men and women. Whenever you meet someone who's a Posse Scholar, you know it because they're just incredibly young men and women and delighted by that program. And thank you for sharing that news. Congratulations to all the Posse Scholars.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Mr. James, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. I first want to start off by saying thank you, Superintendent, for your report. I loved the visuals and I look forward to continuing to see them if this is the new method you're adopting. I find it very engaging. And I'd like to echo Mike, Mr. O'Neill sentiments. Congratulations to all the seniors who got into Posse. Just a huge congratulations to them and further congratulations to our seniors who have wrapped up the the college application process or have already gotten their decisions and who are entering the scholarship application process now. So, you know, it's been a very tough year. So, you know, we see them, we hear them, and congratulations to them. I just wanted to take the time quickly to publicly advertise a town hall that is being hosted by BSAC and co-hosted with BEJA. BSAC stands for Boston Student Advisory Council. BEJA stands for the Boston Education Justice Alliance. We're going to be hosting a town hall tomorrow from four-thirty PM to six PM. And if you want to get off a little bit earlier to go to the district's reopening community conversation, then please feel free to do so. The conversation will be centered around learning time in COVID and, you know, sharing student and teacher experiences. So I just wanted to let the community and my colleagues be aware of that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. James. And Superintendent, I agree with Mr. James' comments. I really like the photos. It is very engaging. And thank you for, in this time of, you know, a lot of sadness for many, many people. I think everyone knows someone who has had someone pass away from COVID or who is, you know, struggling with COVID in the hospital or, you know, there's a lot of sad stories related to COVID as well. It's been some dark times. So sharing the highlights of Amanda Gorman and that she was with us in twenty eighteen and then sharing those photos. And I do also want to say congratulations to the Posse Scholars and also to all the seniors. Whatever your next steps are, that you were able to do that in this year, which hasn't happened in a hundred years, I really commend you. And I thank you for sticking in there. I thank your families for their support and love of you. And I thank all of the teachers and school leaders who also supported our students. I know it was a tough year. And congrats to Tech Boston staff. You know, counselors make the world go around, such important work that they do. So thank you, Jessica, and thank you also to Mike for fifty years of service. That's pretty amazing. So thank you. Thank you for that report, Superintendent. So if there are no further questions or discussion, I would now like to entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to this motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the rule?
Dr. Coleman? Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Before we move on to public comment, we've asked the superintendent and her team to provide us with an important update on health and safety preparation for reopening of school buildings. I know we will be joined by Health and Human Services Chief Marty Martinez, who will be on hand to answer questions the committee has regarding reopening. So at this time, I will turn it over again to the superintendent for opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to, just before we move on to the reopening update, I just want to give a shout out to our communications team and particularly Xavier Andrews, who just makes me look good every single time. And I put out a vision for how I wanted this report to go, and I'm really thankful that it worked for the members and hopefully for the public. So thanks a lot to the team. I'm going to go ahead and just introduce the team that is working behind the scenes again on our reopening update. Just incredible work going on by everyone to ensure a positive opening next Monday as well as assuring the health and safety of our students and our staff. So you'll get some critical updates on that. And then also for the work that they've all been doing, I just want to give a big shout out and a big thanks to everyone on our operations team, food nutrition team, nursing team, and onward. I just have one special note of mention today that our new head of, our new Senior Director of Health Services, Jenny Lobo Lopez, hails from Madison Park School, BPS alum. So we're really excited to have her and she'll be giving the health and safety update. And I want to thank Susan Salter Bennett for her incredible work throughout this pandemic as well.
Evening, Dr. Casillas and school committee members. My name is Teresa Nef Webster and happy to be here and appreciate the opportunity to share updates on health and safety preparations regarding reopening since Mr. DePina has last presented. I will speak regarding the facilities updates and then I'll pass it to my colleagues. So in regards to facilities, in the Phase Two window repairs, there have been twelve thousand four, twelve thousand forty-five windows that were inspected, cleaned, and lubricated. Of those, six thousand three hundred and six have been repaired to date. The remaining eight hundred and ninety, ninety-seven windows are on track for completion by mid-February. In regards to PPE, there are one thousand adult and one thousand child-sized disposable paper masks that have been delivered to school sites, and there is a large inventory, over one million, on hand at Campbell Resource Center that can be delivered as requested by school leaders and custodians. In regards to cleaning supplies, we have three months of cleaning supplies in all schools, which is soap, paper towels, hand sanitizer, and spray misting. These supplies are also updated on a weekly basis through ordering by custodians and are confirmed by area managers. Our approved Boston Public Health Commission cleaning protocols, which have been ongoing, will continue with disinfecting happening on Wednesday and Friday evenings. In regards to our air purifiers and indoor air quality testing, the Phase One air purifiers of five thousand units were delivered from D E C and to all educational spaces. There are, we have now two thousand five hundred more units that have been delivered to the Campbell Resource Center. And the delivery of these additional air purifier units to non-HVAC schools is in process. These units provide between two and two and a half additional air exchange rates per hour. Opening windows one to two inches while not mandated by D E C or CDC with air purifiers onsite will further increase air exchanges. In regards to the MR thirteen filters, we will continue to install each filter as they are delivered. To date of the forty schools that are able to be upgraded, twenty schools have had that upgrade occur. In regards to the data loggers, we are finalizing the selection of a vendor to provide this service. The committee is reviewing bids and finalizing a recommendation to the superintendent. And the most recent update in regards to our indoor air quality testing, we received a schedule for testing from our external independent vendor today. And it has been shared with our partners at the BTU. This testing will be a representative sample of seventeen percent of classrooms across the district. I will now turn our attention to Food and Nutrition Services and Ms. Benavides.
Thank you, Teresa, and thank you Superintendent Casillas for the opportunity to share information from Food and Nutrition Services about our current operations and access to meals for our remote students and plans for our returning students. Currently, we continue to offer three-day meal packs twice a week from ten AM to six PM at thirty-five super sites. At the Quincy Elementary, which is our thirty-sixth site, we offer a five-day meal packs once a week from ten AM to six PM. We've also planned for school and federal holidays that are coming up to continue services during that. So we continue to provide meals during those days and not change the service days so that we avoid confusion and keep with consistent communication for our families and communities. Of our super sites, twenty locations are cooking and prepping and packing fresh meals for families to pick up. We've provided some samples in our presentation of slides of pictures of the meals that we're serving to our families and offering to our families. As schools open, our goal is to continue to cook onsite for schools with kitchens and decrease our purchase of any pre-plated meals. This is a planned process to ensure meals are available to all students consistently. Through this process, we are also seeing, of course, a great participation and an increase in this model where we're cooking onsite. Over two hundred and sixty thousand meals have been distributed. Additionally, our grocery distribution pilot has grown from four schools that we started in October to coming up in February to twenty-two locations. The twenty-two schools were chosen based on three different factors: food insecurity rate, which is above twenty-four percent, a high economically disadvantaged percentage, and there's not a grocery store within one to two miles of the school site. So in collaboration with the City of Boston, the Mayor's Office of Food Access, YMCA, we focused on areas that had gaps in food resources, such as lack of food pantries and grocery stores. We do recognize that some of the locations may be near a food pantry, but also we still included them to ensure that some of the food pantries were only open once a month or very limited hours. The next slide, please. As we return to schools, we are working with administrators to finalize meal service plans, delivery of meals, and number of students returning to ensure we are planning and prepping the meals needed accordingly. For students onsite, we will be available for breakfast and lunch meals, and we will also provide take-home meals for children as they leave on their last cohort day. Previously, we were providing three days of meals for children to take home, but many of the students were only asking for one day's worth of meals due to the bulkiness and weight of the meals. So we've modified this and are seeing some success in the last few weeks when students have returned. However, if students do ask for extra meals, we'll also provide them and also share that our super sites are available for three-day meal pickups. During this time, whereas we are planning for students to come back, we will continue to deliver meals to our students who qualify for the door-to-door transportation. We recognize it may be, it may be difficult for these families to get to our site, so we're making sure our children are provided access. At this time, we have delivered over one point one million meals to our families. In addition, we've also collaborated with the City of Boston to provide services to families that have been impacted by COVID and don't necessarily qualify for the meal delivery. But we do deliver meals and groceries in three-week periods for these families. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. We're going to turn to Mr. Estail regarding athletics.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the time. I just have a brief slide here to update you on the start of athletics in the winter season. As you can see, we had a two-week rollout beginning on January eleventh and with the remaining groups starting on January nineteenth, we are working to deliver girls' basketball, excuse me, girls' and boys' basketball and ice hockey over the next six weeks, concluding at the end of February. And on the left there, you can see there's around over nine hundred students that have self-identified themselves as interested in participating in the winter athletics. And obviously, that's just the initial list and will be pared down as teams are made and teams are finalized. So we are up and running. Hockey games have begun, have started, and we're looking to begin basketball games on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Avery. Now we're going to move on to Safety Services and Chief Coakley.
Neva, are you on mute?
Oh, I apologize. Thank you, Teresa. Thank you, Superintendent Casillas and the council. I just want to start out by saying that Safety Service has been very busy this summer, really just working in support of and improvement of the sentiment around police in the schools and not really ignoring that, but really just accepting it head-on and naming it. We've decided that protocols, you know, they change, they come and go, but values, they become a commitment to our everyday practice. So our values really are providing a safe school learning environment, contributing resources to school staff, fostering positions, positive relationships with our youth, and protect students and develop strategies that resolve problem-solving for youth. In doing that, we've strengthened our community relationships. We created a positive narrative. We've improved the community perceptions and understandings of reform, the new reform bill. We restored transparency and accountability by school police officers by really fostering our new policy of information sharing and our policy report writing. We updated our officers' uniforms. We're updating our officers' uniforms to create a more approachable image, which will support our community and engagement. Our engagement practice has been full force. We really engaged officers, safety officers have engaged over four hundred stakeholders during seventy-five school visits across eleven Boston neighborhoods. We've attended a hundred community meetings and interacted with a thousand community members. I'm not going to bore you all with every one of them, but I'll just highlight just a few, just to let you know. Like my mom says, we're not going to preach to the choir. We really want to talk to individuals that really have had a difficulty and really want to address head-on the conflicts and information related to. and really want to address head-on the conflicts and information related to police engagement. So we have worked with the Judicial Youth Courts. One of the BLA advisors initiated that initial dialogue with us. We've worked with Girls' Leaps. We've been on woke Wednesday, woke woman Wednesdays with Senator Wilkinson. We've also done presentations with the Three Point Foundation, a partnership discussion. We've also done a dialogue with BU WNBA Female Athletics, a dialogue on law enforcement and knowing your rights. We've also done dialogues with the Middlesex District Attorney. I was, I had the privilege of being the keynote speaker for their breakfast. I also worked with the Youth Connect Partnership. I've been a long partner with them even through my Boston Police career, but really continued that partnership in, in this position and role as well. We've also worked with Building Lives, Building Lives Partnership, in which we did a toy drive. We also did turkey distributions throughout this, during the time of the pandemic. We also cited introduction to the city council. I think this is probably my fourth to fifth city council meeting and everything that it entails. And it's just a privilege really to sit and really just to explain exactly what we're doing. Our operation improvements, we've improved our radio communications. This will really bring us into the twenty-first century with Bayburn. Bayburn allows us to be connected with not only law enforcement agencies, but emergency services in case there's an issue within our schools that really brings us to the twenty-first century and our radio communications. We've increased our reliability and compliance. We're dedicated to improving our staff training and professional development. When it first came on, we increased our training by thirty-five hours. We also work looking, looking at improving our recertification with the new reform bill. Our deployment is right presently seventeen superior officers. That's our sergeants and lieutenants, and fifty officers assigned to twenty-six high schools and sixteen middle schools, K through eight. We ensure safe schools, times and arrivals, and also their class transitions and dismissals. We also have four mobile units that are proactive with the schools, and they engage every day and respond to locations upon request. We also provide support with thirty-two food sites. We appreciate that some individuals, some families still need the opportunity to have meals, and we've been honored to really support those food sites throughout this whole time. And now we're looking forward to supporting the athletic games that are going to be coming onboard and as soon as next week. So thank you very much for listening to me. I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief Coakley. And now I'm going to introduce Dr. Lobo Lopez. Very excited to hear about our health service updates.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Good evening, chairperson, members of the school committee, Superintendent Casilius, and the BPS community. I'm Jenny Lobo-Lopes and the new senior director of health services and proud Madison Park graduate. So BPS has been conducting surveillance testing for school staff and pilot testing for students who are in person in the school buildings. Testing first began in October and has since expanded to include nineteen sites. The efforts to expand testing for in-person testing continues. Beginning February first, all BPS staff working in person in our open schools will have access to weekly surveillance testing. BPS has also applied for the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education pooled testing pilot program in order to conduct pooled surveillance testing. This opportunity will be available to all BPS students with a signed consent form on file. We are excited for the expansion of testing and continued collaboration and partnerships with the Boston Public Health Commission, Major League Baseball, CIC Labs, and Caltado Ambulance Services. As of last week, ninety-three students received COVID testing through pooled testing, and about one thousand staff completed the individual COVID testing. Next slide, please. Thank you. Boston Public Schools continue to report weekly updates to the public regarding confirmed positive COVID cases for in-person students and staff. Year-to-date, there are one hundred and fifty-one confirmed positive cases for Boston Public Schools. Out of the one hundred and fifty-one cases, twenty-five are students and one hundred and twenty-six confirmed cases are staff. Next slide, please. Thank you. Health Services continues to work closely with the school community for contact identification and tracing. Health Services identifies possible close contacts through interviewing the COVID-positive case and reviews the information with the Boston Public Health Commission Infectious Disease Unit. Boston Public Health Commission makes the final determination of close contacts. A close contact is defined by the Center for CDC for Disease Control as someone who is within six feet of an infected person for at least fifteen minutes, starting from two days before the illness onset until the time the patient is isolated. Health Service will then inform close contacts individually by phone. Health Services will notify school leaders, nurses, communications, and facilities. Communication will then send a letter to the school community. Facilities initiates cleaning and disinfection of the school, and school leaders will send communication to the school community, all while maintaining confidentiality. Next slide, please. On Thursday, January twenty-first, the Baker Polio Administration announced that all residents in Phase One of the state vaccine distribution plan were eligible to receive the COVID-nineteen vaccine. This includes the BPS health and safety personnel. Through our collaboration with the Boston Public Health Commission, ninety percent of safety personnel and fifty-four percent of health personnel have been vaccinated to date. I want to iterate that nurses began scheduling vaccine appointments this week through Health Services and Boston Public Health Commission. On Monday, January twenty-fifth, and on that day alone, sixty-seven nurses were vaccinated. Health personnel are also receiving and have scheduled appointments to receive the COVID vaccine at one of the many sites shared through the mass.gov website. On January fifteenth, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health announced the removal of required flu vaccination for the school year 2021, with the rationale that preliminary data shows that this has been a mild flu season to date and the adherence of mask-wearing and social distancing due to COVID-nineteen as well. And to alleviate the burden to obtain flu vaccination and focus on continuing efforts for COVID-nineteen vaccinations, BPS and Boston Public Health Commission continue to strongly recommend that everyone aged six months and older receive their seasonal flu vaccine. Thank you. And that concludes the presentation. Superintendent Casilius, do you want to say a few words, or should we open it up for questions?
Thank you, Jenny. I'm just so appreciative of you and the team as well. We'll just go ahead and open it up for questions from the committee.
You can raise your hand virtually or just in your box, Ms. Robinson. Looks like you have a question.
Yes, I have too. Thank you so much for all of the reports. In, in terms of schools reopening, I had a question about what percentage of teachers would be returning to their schools or classrooms for the first time since the shutdown? Or have teachers been coming all along and so that we'll just be having new students arriving?
That depends by school, Ms. Robinson. I don't know if Mary Dillman is on and can talk to the specific numbers regarding our staff that will be returning to school. Otherwise, I can get you that information. But they, there are some teachers who have chosen to use their classrooms and have been coming all along using their classrooms. But any, of course, we have thirty-two schools open now. So, you know, it's a smaller percentage of the teachers that will be coming back, obviously, but I can get you those numbers.
Right. Because I guess in relationship to that, my question would be, what kind of orientation would there be for teachers coming back in who have not been in buildings with regard to how to access all of the extra services or, or how schools now work, given the changes in, you know, all kinds of policies, so that they are as prepared as to be able to prepare students to these changes?
Yeah, so our communications office has been sending all of the information to our teachers and to our school community as they come back. Obviously, it's not just teachers, it's staff, it's, you know, custodial staff and our nutrition staff and our secretaries and everybody coming back, and we want to make sure that they have the health and safety protocols. So our school leaders are also sharing that information with them as they return.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have two more questions. Do you want me to hold them until everybody has gone around and then, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say that when I forgot to say that. So thank you for, for doing that. I appreciate it. So just as a reminder, two questions each, and we'll do five minutes, and then we'll do a second round to make sure everybody's questions get answered. So Dr. Rivera, you had your hand up. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I have two questions. One of them is about slide number three. It talked about the indoor air quality. And I noticed that, like, there was going to be a sample seventeen, like a seventeen percent sample of the testing. So my question is, why, why not test every school, the indoor quali, air quality of every school? That's one question. And then the other question is about whether this, any of the school buildings will be used after-school hours and if that's going to affect sort of the disinfection and how do you sort of factor in, you know, if you're going to be also having the building used, say, with an after-school program? Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Rivera. Teresa, if you're on, you can speak to the testing that we're doing with the air monitoring. That would be great. We are testing every school that will be scheduled. However, not every single classroom. So if you could speak to that, Teresa, that would be great. And just to remember, I also want to recognize that Chief Martinez has joined us. He could join us at the beginning of the presentation, but if there are questions for Chief Martinez about the metrics and where we're at or any of the other health and safety protocols or the BPHC approval, he can answer those questions.
Thank you. And just a reminder for on the staff side, also, if you could keep your responses brief as well. Thank you.
Sure. So in regards to the air quality testing that's occurring, we are, we are following the guidance from the Harvard School of Public Health that is, has recommended ten percent of the recommend, the representative sample of classrooms be tested. And we actually decided to put that up to seventeen percent to show that we want to make a more, a larger representative sample. So we're following that guideline, guidance. And in regards to the sanitation question, there is a schedule for each individual school that a school custodian day and night follow with their school leader that ensures that after-school activities or athletic activities are taken into account with the scheduling and ensuring that the sanitation happens within all of the time parameters needed.
I think Dr. Rivera had a second question about after-school. If there were any activities.
She just answered that about cleaning.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. Okay, thank you. Is that, is that, is that a Dr. Rivera?
I'll have one more, but again, those were two, so come back.
Okay, we'll come back to you. Mr. James?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to Ms. Grace. Hello, nice to see you. My first question is, when did the community visits that you described on the Safety Services slide occur? Was it before COVID, during COVID? Was it virtual, non-virtual?
All the above. It started, matter of fact, I started day one. James, that's a great question. I started day one coming out. I transitioned right from BPD after twenty-seven years over there, leaving the Bureau of Community Engagement, and I started that same model, just coming right in BPS. I had an opportunity to do this job, kind of my dream job, looking at it lasting fifteen years ago. And Dr. Consilius and the mayor gave me opportunity to do it. And so I started day one. I think my first day on, I visited maybe like, maybe seventeen, eighteen schools, and I kept it up for the rest of the week, really just making sure, had a dedicated commitment to visit every school. After that, all of my partners that I have been engaged with, because I'm a hometown girl. I grew up in Boston. I live in Roxbury. I still live here. And so I have a deep connection not only to the community, but to my alumni. I have a great HBCU alumni. Shout out to our new vice president. And so I understand what she's feeling. With that, I kept my same relationships and really worked. So every day from day one, and we have a detailed schedule. We can sit back. We've met with BSAC Group, matter of fact, two, twice so far. We're also in a restorative justice practices with them. We're in our second engagement with them. I believe it's next week. We just finished our first one last week. I heard it went marvelous. We're having a debriefing tomorrow, and then we're going to continue that process on. So this is a continued effort for me, continued model. Like I said in my beginning, it's not just protocol, because protocols change with priorities. This is definitely a value for me.
Thank you, Ms. Grace. And then my second question is, on the slide, it's mentioned that four mobile units proactively visit schools every day. I'd like to know why that's necessary. I personally don't believe that having four units departed to schools proactively is necessary, especially if the school isn't open. So I'm just curious as to why that is, what exactly is, is the purpose?
Mm-hmm. Great question again. But Boston is a vast area, Mr. James, but Boston is very wide. So we don't have officers assigned to every school and every district, but there's sometimes there's circumstances that go on at other districts that we're not assigned to. And then we have our food service. We have thirty-two sites that we are monitoring. Matter of fact, on our Wednesdays, extra sites are available to the community. So we're making sure that we are, making sure that those sites and those individuals working those sites are safe. So those are roving units that can adhere to different circumstances that go in a community. I'm also in deep contact with BPD. So a lot of, unfortunately, we're having a lot of incidences in and around dinnertime. So I think it's important that we're out there, we're available to our, to our BPD, BPS staff.
Thank you so much. I'm going back to Ms. Robinson.
Um, yes. So, okay, I have two questions. When you were, and this is for you, Ms. Grace. You said that you deploy, I guess my question is, what determines whether a school has an onsite detail versus not? And can you move from needing to have one to not, or go in the other direction? Because you were saying that half of our schools basically have onsite. And I guess, how does that go? How does that happen?
Well, we're having an evolving, evolving practice, Ms. Johnson. A very good question. Thank you so much. Very good to see you. That is determined by the number of incidences, in particularly really the area that the school is in. Sometimes we have areas that denote a lot more of attention based on where they're located. So that's how we try to deploy our staff. I am, I mean, I'm looking at that as we evolve in this process. So right now, I elected just starting out because of the familiarity and the stability of officers in schools and, and to tell you the truth, and the request of the staff and administrators in that school, we've kept certain officers there. Moving forward, we may make some adjustments as we move forward and, and circumstances change. But previously and presently, I've really made that decision based on circumstances that, that happens in that school.
So it's, it's, it's as much community-related as it is what actually happens physically in the building? So it's a both-and?
Absolutely. School-based, community-based.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps a lot. My last question is for a health person. We say that we have twenty-five students who have had COVID and a hundred and twenty-six adults. And I'm wondering, is there any correlation between the two? Have we looked, you know, are students that are getting COVID related to that hundred and twenty-six adults? Or is it a wider variety or no relationship at all between both the numbers of students and adults in a particular school that have contracted COVID and the timing of those things?
Thank you. So, so far through contact tracing and through Health Services, we have not seen a true correlation between the two numbers.
Okay. All right, because I know one of the, the big issues we hear all of the time around the fear of going back to school is contracting back and forth. And so I guess the question is, how do our schools, our teachers, everyone, our community, understand what these numbers mean? And I know only a very small number of our students have been in school. And so I guess the question is, would, with having more students coming back and more educators coming back? And so, I guess the question is, would, with having more students coming back and more educators coming back, do we foresee a rise in this numbers, you know, or is it something that we really don't know until things occur?
Right. We work very closely with the Boston Public Health Commission to identify the close contacts. And then, from then, those numbers come together with them. So, I don't know if Chief Martinez can answer even better, but so far, that's what we're seeing.
Okay.
I, Madam Chair, yeah. So, to Jenny's point, remember Robinson, we, you know, there isn't, there's, it's been a small percentage of folks who have tested positive. And to Jenny's point, most of the contact tracing has connected folks testing positive from things happening not in school buildings. So, people, most positive cases have been from people who've tested positive in the community and then notified BPS that they were positive. So, again, important to track and trace, but you know, the positive rate, both based on testing for teachers and staff, has been pretty low, lower than the community rate. So, we'll continue to create access so that we can catch any cases and do our best to contain it.
Right. Thank you very much.
Party, I wonder if you might, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I wonder if Chief Martinez might want to just update on the daily rates and the metrics and where we're at.
Sure. Is that Chair?
Do you, why don't we just go through the questions and then we'll come back to you, Chief, if that's okay? So, Vice Chair O'Neil, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair. And first of all, welcome to Chief Cokely-Greis. Thank you, Fisher, since the first time you've been talking to us. Thank you for what you shared and how you're looking to think through our school safety approach. So, keeping our students and our staff safe. So, thank you and look forward to your future thoughts on that in the future. But two quick questions. One is for Director Lobo Lopez, Lopez, excuse me, I want to make sure to pronounce the name correctly. Lopez, okay, great. And thank you. And did you say Madison Park or Madison Park? Thanks. Glad to hear that. And may I ask, what, did you, did you go on a health track when you went Madison Park?
I did. I was in the Health Assistant Program with Mrs. Carol Reed. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair. I hope that doesn't count as a question, but that's delighted to hear. So, I'm really interested in, you mentioned that we're applying for the pilot program with the state, the peer testing. And, but you mentioned that is for students. Would that ultimately also be, my understanding of the state program was it could be for staff as well, and that what the state's gonna pay for part of it, and then the federal government's gonna pay for part of it? Do we anticipate expanding that whole program? Or could you just, and maybe Chief Martinez as well, if you could talk about it a little bit more, that would be great.
So, I can briefly say, so we've applied for the MassDSE, for the pool testing, to include students and I believe staff as well. Right now, we're just going through the process of getting all the paperwork in and consent and everything together. So, that testing is, will be provided through MassDSE for six weeks. So, that is correct. So, for now, that's, we're just gathering all of the application process things that we need to have together to roll that out shortly.
But did you think that was just for students, or could it be for students and staff as well?
So, right now, for, for staff, we're using Cataldo Services and BPHC, we're still using the same process. When MassDSE, and I don't know if anyone else can answer to that, but once we have more information from MassDSE, as far as how we can expand that to our staff as well.
Can I, member O'Neil, to go to Jenny's point? So, yeah, the pilot is, allows you to use the pool testing for staff, if you choose to do that. But in partnership with BPS and BPHC, we are gonna do our very best to try to create individual PCR testing access. Adults, as we, as the science has been clear, adults are more infectious than young people and are more likely to spread COVID. So, the notion of having access for adults to individual PCR testing is likely a better option, although a more expensive option, than having adults in a pool testing option, primarily because you could have a lot of positive pools, because you're gonna have potentially more positive adults than you do students. So, in the current pilot we're in, we're just pool testing students and PCR testing adults. The state pilot, if possible, we will likely pool test students and continue to PCR, offer a PCR option for individual teachers so that we can catch any cases that way. So, that is our goal, to continue down that route. But again, the state pilot does allow you to do that. But they will only pay for the pool testing, not the individual testing.
Thank you, Chief Martinez and Director Lobo Lopez. I appreciate that. I'm also curious about vaccines as they do come about. And Chief, are you considering, I know other districts and other parts of the country are using the school systems to help vaccinate first teachers. And, and you know, we want to get all of our staff as, to the front of the line as soon as possible. But then, also beyond that, maybe using our school nurses, our school system to help distribute vaccines on a wider basis. I know a number of the districts are doing it. I just, I didn't know if you had had some thoughts about that, Chief Martinez, since we have you here.
Yes, remember, O'Neil, we, you know, actually, I think, I think it was today, had a meeting with the superintendent and leadership to sort of talk about our current draft plan around vaccinations for K through twelve, staff through BPS, educators and workers across the board. And for us, we're planning to use a combination of strategies and which would include potentially partnering with school nurses and prioritizing giving access to K through twelve educators when they become eligible through the state guidelines. So, for us, we think there's a variety of options, because not every, it's not gonna be, one way is not gonna be the most convenient way for everyone. So, we know there's gonna need to be a lot of options, including accessing the large-scale sites, accessing some priority group clinics that would just be for K through twelve educators, accessing some small community-based efforts that will be lifted out for essential workers, including K through twelve educators, and then even some mobile efforts that would be dedicated specifically for staff. So, we would like to be able to use school-based nurses and use the nurses within the district to help us vaccinate folks. As folks know, our school nurses are being vaccinated this week. Most are getting the option to be vaccinated this week, and so, or at least to start that process, since it's a two-dose process. But we definitely want to use, I'm gonna slow down, we definitely want to use individuals and nurses to help that process and create as many options as possible to vaccinate our BPS staff, teachers across the board.
Thank you, Chief Martinez. I just want to remind everybody, if you could please slow down a little bit for the interpreters. And Dr. Rivera?
So, thank you again, Chief Martinez. It's really been an honor to work with you on the mayor's COVID Health Inequities Task Force. My question is related to the vaccines. It's great to hear that there's all this, you know, gonna be this access. But even just our own slide today shows that just fifty-four percent of the health personnel have been vaccinated. And I'm not sure if that has to do with, you know, access and availability right now? Or if there's even hesitancy towards getting that? We're seeing that in nursing homes, right? Where, you know, even if they're, you know, phase one, stage one, they're not getting the vaccine. So, I wonder if you could speak a little bit about maybe efforts to do more outreach around, you know, getting the vaccine? Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Dr. Rivera, you know, there's no question, there is still hesitancy in terms of, I didn't see the slide deck, but in terms of, you know, the school-based nurses, our BPS nurses, all BPS nurses who want a vaccine will be able to get one either this week or next week. So, there is clearly supply and availability. So, it's not yet, it's not that there isn't availability, but it may be appointments, it may be scheduling and timing. But separate from that, there's no question, there's still hesitancy. Even our hospitals, our first responders, our healthcare workers, as you mentioned, and long-term care facilities are continuing to, you know, not necessarily take the vaccine and have some hesitancy. So, the city, working with, as you know, the Health Inequities Task Force, but other partners, have launched a public awareness campaign to do two, kind of two tracks. One, educate and inform around the knowledge around the vaccine, its safety, the measures that are in place to sort of how did it get approved, giving people the information so they can make the best decision for them and their families, but sort of answering questions and providing facts. And then, the second path of making sure that people meet people like themselves, virtually meet them over Zoom or press conferences or webinars or on ads on social media. So, people can understand the journey people are taking, whether it's health professionals who were hesitant but got the vaccine, whether it's an EMT or a police officer who wasn't sure, or a school nurse who wasn't sure. So, though, we're trying to going down both of those efforts, and part of that is also the BPS community. We would like to see a very high number of our BPS staff get vaccinated. And that will help us, not only in our reopening, but help them in their own safety and healthcare. And so, we are gonna, we're going down that process to build awareness and to make sure that folks not only have access in the communities that are hardest hit, but that we kind of address the mistrust that's there, rightfully so, given obviously a long history of inaccurate information and inaccuracies, as well as, you know, black and brown folks being taken advantage of by the healthcare system. So, we both have to acknowledge it. We have to build the trust around it and then make sure that the vaccine is accessible. So, when people are ready, we can give them the vaccine to be able to take it. So, there is still hesitancy, and we're gonna have to keep going to address it well into the summer, into the fall, well beyond when there's any shortage of supply. We're gonna really have to do the work to address that.
Thank you. I can also answer that a bit with the percentage. So, on Monday is when most nurses were scheduled, this Monday, and sixty-seven nurses went and got vaccinated, right? And so, I think that's a big number, just to say, just in one day. Also, nurses are being vaccinated through other jobs that they may have. So, there's some nurses that have already been vaccinated outside of this program with BPHC. There's also nurses who are already scheduled through the mass site before we were able to schedule them. So, the numbers will be much bigger towards the end of the week. And there are also nurses being scheduled to be vaccinated for tomorrow. So, I think that this number mostly shows up to Monday evening and what those numbers were.
And I'd like to add as well, just to, you know, with the phase one law enforcement was on the first list. And I can just do, Chief Martinez, through your informative lectures on the mayor's discussions every week, we kind of use that in my weekly meetings to kind of encourage our officers in the future opening of schools. So, I can really report that close to, less than a handful of my officers are not vaccinated up to this, today, up today. Matter of fact, we had another nine to ten officers that got vaccinated today. And I, but the bullet, I'm totally afraid of needles, but I did it. And I did it, not under representation, just for BPS, but just for my community, you know what I mean? And I posted on my Instagram page. I have over two hundred hits right now, just watching it. And I've had so many different calls and funnels. So, I think it's very important, like you said, to have someone that recognizes and identifies just like them. So, thank you.
Thank you all so much for your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James, you still have your hand up? Did you have additional questions, or you just didn't put it down?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is for Mr. Martinez. Nice to see you. I wanted to, I asked this at the last meeting, and I'm glad you're here, so I can ask you directly. So, the BPHC threshold is some number around three hundred thirty-nine. I'd just like to know where that number comes from.
Yeah, so, all the thresholds related to BPHC data related to COVID were established basically from a very low benchmark in the summer. So, in the summer, we had a very, our lowest cases since we had COVID, our lowest daily cases, our lowest positive percentage rate, the lowest number of folks that were hospitalized across the board. And so, in the summer, we established thresholds that if hit, would allow us to be able to respond accordingly based on these, on six metrics that I can update in a second. But those thresholds were basically using a formula of looking at what the averages were in the summer and then creating standard, two standard deviations above, but primarily to show that there was a significant level of activity that we wanted to make sure to monitor. That's how they were established.
Thank you. And then, my second question is to Ms. Grace. You had mentioned earlier that, you had mentioned earlier that, you know, units are deployed because there have, specifically because there have been incidences that arise at dinnertime. I want you to sort of help me understand just the context of that. I think the community and I need a, just need a walkthrough of what that looks like, because students aren't in school at dinnertime. So, I'm just a little confused.
No, you asked about the four cars deployment throughout the city. And I said that around, right now, we are servicing the thirty-two food sites that are open every day. They were open three times a week from ten to six PM, which now it gets dark. And we've had incidences around dinnertime. I just gave a dinnertime time with like five, six o'clock, in which, you know, sometimes there's a lot of incidences that go on. So, for the safety and security of the staff leaving our food sites, distribution sites, it's beneficial to have our roving cars around during that time, particularly the sites that do not have designated officer at the school site during that time. And now, we're looking at two, we're looking at two, the athletics coming on board. So, it's very important to have additional cars out, because athletics are now coming. Even though there's no spectators, there's also the teams coming and going, transporting each other, you know. You know, so there's a lot of still-moving pieces. We still have a lot of buildings open during this time, even though we've had virtual, teachers have responded to the buildings and most buildings. So, that's what I was explaining when you asked your question.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
For your question.
Thank you. Mr. Tran?
Hi, I just have one question to the pertinent staff. On, hold on. On the slide nine, where it indicates that one hundred thirteen staff had tested positive and nineteen students have tested positive. The one hundred thirteen staff, of course, there are, there are teachers in there as well. My question is the, you know, is relating to notification. How soon does the school inform the parents or the community that certain, you know, without naming name or without disclosing any kind of individual personal information regarding the person who has COVID? But how soon does the school inform parents that there, there had been a staff who has contracted COVID? The question I raise is because I have received information from, from my community, from the Asian community, that there were students who contracted the COVID after coming in contact with, with, you know, with teachers at school. And a day or two later, the family received the notification that there was a teacher who, you know, who had tested positive. As a result of that, the student's family was later on contracted COVID. contracted COVID. So the, my, my question, I don't know where, how you, you resolve that, but the question is, how do we prevent that? How do we prevent the unfortunate infection from a teacher to a student prior to the school notification to the family? That's the question. Is my question clear and understandable?
So I can just briefly review. So once, once the health services is informed of a possible close contact, there's an interview and process that takes place with the positive case. And this is only for those that are in person in the building, right? That then has to be reviewed with BPHC. And the information that is provided is, is then provided to BPHC regarding the close contacts. The BPHC will then determine who those close contacts are. Notification and the close contact process may anywhere between twenty-four and forty-eight hours, but that everyone is notified, the whole process. If that makes, I don't know if that answers your question.
Oh, go ahead.
Right, so the sooner that health services is made aware and school leaders are made aware, the faster the process will go. Because you have to not only interview the close contact, but you also have to speak with those close contacts. And so it's, it's, it's a process. It does happen within twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
I see. So there's no, unfortunately, then there is no viable preventive measure that can stop the, the transmission or can stop the, the the, 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 the infection from, from staff to students before it, it happened, right? Because what, what I'm, I'm trying to, to, to determine here is that I have some cases where students who come into contact with certain teacher and then without knowing that that teacher had contracted COVID, and the student then come home and spread the, the, the COVID to the entire family. And the entire family, as a result of that, became infected with COVID.
Right, so the best thing that we can do is prevention, right? And mitigation strategies to decrease any risk of contracting COVID, which means hand hygiene, mask wearing, and I mean strict adherence to those rules and guidelines.
So would, would it be possible if, from this point on, any teachers reporting to school to work or any staff that comes into contact with, with the public that, that, that will be reporting to work onsite should submit something to the extent that, that, you know, to, to, to clarify that he or she is infection-free?
So there's a, a home checklist that should be done by all who are going in person for screening purposes prior to coming into any building in BPS. And, and those are some, that, that goes along with wearing your mask and being safe. And no one should be coming into school if they are symptomatic and do not feel well.
Right, so you know.
And Mr. Tran, we're not, yeah, and Mr. Tran, I don't, we're not aware of any transmission from a teacher to a student. I believe that's true, right? Nurse Lopez, yeah. And I just, I also want to let you know that we do require staff to do this checklist prior to coming in. We do continue to establish a six feet distance. We, we are strict about our mask wearing, we are strict about our hand sanitizing protocols, and we are limiting the number of staff that are in the building and that are in, in a classroom. And that's part of our BPHC approval. They had to know our staffing. They had to know the number of students in our, in our buildings as part of our approval process.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, team. Mr. Tran, I know there's, there's not going to be, you know, answers. It's such a, it's something that we just, we have to live with and navigate as best we can. I think with Ms. Lopes and the superintendent, with all the precautions that we can, but obviously, you know, everyone is always, we've all been worried and, you know, I think we've learned some things, which is good. But it's, again, you, we can do all that we can do and to keep each other safe. So I'm going to move on now to ask Chief Martinez, if you could speak a little bit more on just a higher level in terms of what's happening in the city.
Sure. So thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you, obviously, to the, to the members and everyone who's, who's watching. You know, briefly, I think from Health and Human Services perspective, obviously, we've been working closely with BPS and, and monitoring our COVID activity in the community. And what we have seen is over the past couple of weeks now, we've started to see a decrease in COVID activity in the community. We are monitoring six metrics, as a reminder, three metrics that are tied to COVID activity, and then three metrics related, related to hospitalizations and hospital activity. And we've seen a decrease in our overall cases that we've been seeing in the city of Boston. We're down to three hundred and seventy-six point nine cases on average a day as of January twenty-first. That's down from a, a high and early January and above where we had, where we had been there coming out of the holidays. We are down to six point nine percent positivity in the city right now, which as of the twenty-first as well, continuing to see about five thousand people tested per day on average. And all three of our hospital metrics have improved over the last several weeks. We currently have about three hundred and thirty COVID-positive patients in our Boston hospitals, down from about four hundred and fifty COVID-positive patients about two weeks ago. So the, the metrics are moving in the direction we want them to move. We have seen a decrease in activity, a decrease in positive test rate, and continue to see that go in the direction we want. You know, we saw an uptick leading into the holidays that was expected. We saw that activity continue to be the case. And then as we were both expecting and hoping, we saw a decrease. You may have seen the city did loosen its COVID restrictions effective Monday. We will go back to phase three of those restrictions. And, and that's been an important piece to continue to live with COVID as we try to balance what's essential. We did, through the Boston Public Health Commission, were able to review the reopening plans that the superintendent and her team put together and feel confident that the plans are in place for BPS to reopen as safely as possible with an additional number of students on February first through the review of that work, both by the Boston Public Health Commission, Executive Director Rita Nieves, and our Medical Director, Dr. Jennifer Low. And so again, time and time again, you know, these are difficult places to be, but for BPHC and HHS, our goal is clear. We prioritize what's essential while we live with COVID and respond to it and put into place all the measures that we can to protect people as much as possible, which is why we are laser light focused and will continue to be on the prevention messages, prevention measures, as well as widespread distribution of the vaccine as it becomes, becomes available. So we are continuing to do that work. We were pleased to see BPS roll out additional safety measures in the schools as well as expanding testing for students and staff to ensure that we could continue to put in place the things necessary as we live with COVID. But as we continue to see this decrease in activity, we want to continue to prioritize what's essential. And we're, we're thankful to be able to try to do that as we see rates decrease. So I just want to thank the superintendent and leadership, as well as you, all committee members for the work you are continuing to do to prioritize not only our students and our families, but the health and safety of our teachers and staff to ensure that everyone can reopen as safely as possible. My number one commitment to you and the work that we're doing is we are always going to prioritize health and safety and what's most essential. And that is the work that we are doing across the board in Health and Human Services and BPHC. So want to just offer you all the current assessment of where we're at and the continued work that we will take on as we partner with BPS to continue in this school year. And I'll pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Chief Martinez. Thank you for being with us tonight. I know you are working twenty-four hours a day. I see you at every meeting I go to. And I want to thank you on behalf of all of our students and families and staff for all the work that you and your small but mighty department has been doing and working with you on the Health and Equities Task Force, just all of your knowledge. I'm so grateful and grateful to the city too for all of the work in general, you know, that has been undertaken from giving direct cash assistance to the food sites, you know, and on and on. I think it's just been amazing, the, the care for our residents. So thank you. And I, my questions were stolen already. So I just want to say that I, I look forward to making sure that, that our teachers and staff are prioritized because, you know, in my mind, they are essential workers and, you know, should receive the vaccine. And we definitely will partner with you around the education piece, just in general, for our residents. I always said, you know, if Dr. Fauci gets the vaccine, I'll do it. So everybody has their, you know, so we have to figure out who is the person you look up to that will take the vaccine, you know, to kind of give that. Because I know it's been, it's been a lot of mixed messages we've had as a country. And so we understand why people are nervous, but we look forward to working with you. I want to thank the BPS team just in general, because they also have been working nonstop. This team tonight and just in general, everybody from, you know, Mark delivering Chromebooks to people, to all the food, the people at food sites. We went to visit myself and Vice Chair O'Neil. I mean, that's just all hands on deck. So I want to thank everybody. And just also say that, you know, this is work that has been going on since, you know, last year. EPS has, we've moved as much as we can with the information that we have received. Whenever we have new information, we've tried to move to those areas, you know, that are science-based, that are telling us do X, Y, and Z. So they're not new things that all of a sudden we're doing. And I know that it can be scary, you know, because there are still unknowns about the virus. And we just, again, have to do what we can to live with and be as careful as possible. As Mr. James said a few meetings ago, wearing your masks, social distancing, all those things are really, really important. And I, I'm really excited to see a BPS alum, Ms. Lopes, you know, you are a great role model for our students going to Madison and, and, you know, doing a career in what you started with. It's just really inspirational. I want to also thank Ms. Coakley-Greis. We haven't met in person. I saw your picture when you were, you know, transitioning. And I look forward to one day meeting in person. And thank you, everyone, again, for all your presentations. So I'm gonna thank everybody and we look forward to hearing more about reopening at our future meetings. So thank you again, Chief Martinez, for being with us. We're going to move into a public comment period, and I'm going to ask all of our speakers to identify the neighborhood where you live. We, as committee, are committed to hearing all the voices and want to ensure that all parts of the city are included. And as I mentioned before, this is a common practice among other city departments during their public meetings. And so we're now going to move on to general public comment. And I'm going to ask Ms. Sullivan to please take that over. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have nineteen speakers this evening. So in accordance with school committee policy, each speaker will have three minutes to speak. And I remind you, when you have thirty seconds remaining, those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. To the attendees who are listening to simultaneous interpretation on a different Zoom channel, please move over to the English language channel when the public testimony is being translated from a non-English language. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you're from before you begin. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure that you are signed into Zoom with the same name that you used to sign up for public comments. And you can rename yourself if needed. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. Our first speakers this evening are Erica Haydock, Kathleen Adams, Dara Murphy, and Mike Heishman. Erica Haydock?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great. My name's Erica Haydock. I live in Charlestown. I'm a parent, a BPS parent and part of the advocacy group Voices for BPS Families. In the two weeks that have passed since the last school committee meeting, the Biden administration has made it clear that reopening schools is a top priority. Not only that, Governor Baker also highlighted the importance of school reopening, excuse me, in last night's State of the Commonwealth. He spoke of our first-in-the-nation COVID testing program for public schools, and I'm very encouraged to hear that BPS has applied for this program. There's clear direction and leadership on school reopening now, both at the federal and state level. And it's time for Boston leadership to step up and put students first and have reopening at the top of the agenda. In addition to political leadership, science and public health experts continue to reiterate that schools are safe. Just yesterday, the CDC released an updated guidance on opening schools, stating that there's been little evidence that schools have contributed meaningfully to increase community transmission and that keeping schools closed could adversely affect students', academic product, mental health, and access to essential services. There is no longer doubt on this topic. School is safe and school is essential, as Marty Martinez just said. While I'm still of the opinion that the current BPS reopening plan is too slow, I'm a realist and now simply want BPS to follow the plan with no more delays. I'm encouraged that the BPHC gave the green light that it is safe for the remainder of the hip students to return to their classrooms on Monday, but we must not stop there. BPS must adhere to the timeline set forth and send our littlest learners back to school on March first. I want to thank Dr. Cassellius and the district for publishing and updating the COVID-nineteen dashboard, as well as releasing school-specific reports on air quality. These are important tools to build trust and transparency in the community. And I urge the superintendent to send a standalone email notifying the entire BPS community that they have access to this information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Kathleen Adams.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Adams. I'm from West Roxbury. I'm a BPS parent of a sixth grader at the Patrick Linden School and a seventh grader at Boston Latin School, and I'm also a proud graduate of Boston Latin School. BPS recently responded to a November twenty-twenty Freedom of Information Act request with documents that show BPS has designed an exam school admissions policy to disadvantage non-BPS students. Specifically, the documents state that modeling seat distribution to zip codes based on the applicant pool resulted in non-BPS students being, quote, "overrepresented", unquote, in the applicant pool in three zip codes, and BPS students being, quote, "underrepresented", unquote, in five zip codes. To correct for this, simulations thereafter allocate seats to zip codes based on the percentage of school-aged children in the zip code rather than the applicants in the zip code. This negatively impacts twelve zip codes, including several low-income zip codes. My zip code, West Roxbury.
My zip code, West Roxbury, would have had 8.1% of 850 seats distributed through the zip code model based on the applicant pool, but will now have just 4.8% of those seats based on school-aged children, a staggering loss of approximately 28 exam school seats. An admissions policy designed to ensure that non-BPS students are not, quote, "overrepresented", unquote, is not a policy that treats residents of Boston equally. Please revise the zip code allocation model to ensure that all residents of Boston are treated equally in the admissions process, and that the negative impact on the 12 zip codes, including several low-income zip codes, is reversed. And I'd also like to point out that the mailings I've received recently, so for example, the PEBT cards, they've come to me and my address is Boston, Mass. 02132. Transportation letters from BPS come to me in West Roxbury, 02132. The most recent letter that my son got telling me that he was in the pool for the exam schools was addressed to Rosendale, 02132. I'm wondering if my son is not part of the 20% for the merit seats, is he going to be in the pool for West Roxbury, 02132, Rosendale, 02132, or Boston, 02132? I hope he's counted as a member of Boston, because that's how I consider myself. I pay my taxes to Boston. He's a Boston Public School student. He deserves to be in an exam school, because that is what he's worked hard for all these years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dara Murphy. I don't see anyone signed in under that name. If Dara is with us, could you please raise your hand virtually, Dara Murphy? Okay, our next speaker is Mike Heishman.
Hello.
Evening.
Mike Heishman, Dorchester, member of Beja, Boston Education Justice Alliance. The United States has 4.25% of the world's population. We are number one in Corona infections and number one in Corona deaths. Why is it that most of the world has been taking better care of its people? Oh, well, at least the stock market and the billionaires are doing very well. As I testified at July's school committee meeting, I am grateful that the Boston School Committee and Boston Teachers Union have an agreement to return all of our children to in-person learning. I fully agree that we won't be able to take care for all and educate all of our children to the best of our ability until all of our children are able to return into our school buildings full-time. I also agree with the parents who are saying that many of their children who have remained at home have been harmed. At the same time, our community is attempting to survive the most horrific environmental catastrophe of our lifetime. More of our fellow residents have been killed by Corona in less than a year than all of US fat fatalities during World War II. We have recently discovered that it would take longer for our highest-needs residents, including myself, to receive the vaccine. We also recently just learned that Corona has mutated, and the new virus will spread quicker and is deadlier. Many of our children and others in our community have been harmed by Corona and the multiple effects of the virus. Many parents have been testifying in recent meetings that you desperately want your children returned to school buildings. Your lives would be much easier. Your children would be doing much better. However, when tens of thousands of our children and educational workers returned to school buildings, not one of them will be entering a 100% safety bubble. Dangers have been mitigated. They cannot be eliminated. The virus will spread. Our schools will not be safe. Some of them will suffer serious and even fatal consequences, and their infection will spread into our community. Some parents who have been advocating for the rapid reopening of the schools have sounded like COVID deniers. Please acknowledge that your advocacy will have harmful consequences. I want my vaccine, and I want it now. Last November, I turned 74. If only I was 75, I wouldn't be here this evening and would be standing in line waiting for my shot. Despite my request for assistance, no one has told me how I can make a slight modification to my birth certificate. Teachers are rightfully enraged that I have stepped in line in front of them. The governor has placed them below me during Phase Two. They are rightfully enraged because they are under pressure from all levels of government and the corporate media to go back to work.
Ms. Heishman, your time is up. If you could wrap up, please.
Thank you. So that the economy will reopen. Their health and lives have to be sacrificed so that Wall Street will increase its profits. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from Cory Zangabat, Jessica Taharaj, Kathy Ware, and Sheri Kelleher. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom.
Cory?
Yes. Hi, thank you, Madam Chairwoman Oliver Devilla and the other committee members. My name is Cory Zangabat, and I'm a resident of Charlestown. My daughter is a K-1 student at the Harvard Kent, and I'm also a member of Voices for BPS Families. This is my fifth testimony in a row. I'm tired of testifying, but most students are still not in school, and there are still unanswered questions. At this point, it's not worth delineating the scientific evidence that has made it crystal clear that students should be in school if they choose. The CDC joined the chorus this week, and we'll lay to the game better late than ever. I have three questions/comments. Number one, Voices for BPS Families has always taken the position that our hip students should be the first to return, and hopefully more will next Monday. But the next subset of high-priority students are the little learners, students for whom social-emotional learning happens in person, but who have spent hours a day on the computer for months. This over-reliance on digital tools is developmentally inappropriate for young children, and they will never get this time back. Hip students are in school four days a week. Why can't K-0, K-1, and K-students across the district be permitted to return four days as well? Even if they do return on March 1st, this group will receive less than 30 days of in-person learning this year. Where is the creativity to figure out how to accommodate the small group of young children, made smaller yet by the significant drop in BPS enrollment? Number two, what is BPS's response to the other mental and physical health crises protracted remote learning has adduced? ADHD, setbacks in reading, a spike in suicides amongst teenagers, impaired vision, language losses for English learners, pediatric emergency rooms filled with mental health diagnoses, including depression, anxiety, and eating disorders? Students, especially students under the age of 10, are not contracting COVID, but they are suffering from serious health issues. Health issues that could have been avoided had Boston, like its peer cities, done the right thing, listened to the signs, and brought those younger children back to the classroom. You have failed these children and their families. And in the end, you will have done more harm than good. Number three, I appreciate the update regarding pool testing, and I hope BPS continues to proactively communicate to families its intentions. I will just add that teachers and families alike need convenient onsite testing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Taharaj.
Hi, thank you, everyone. My name is Jessica Taharay. I live in Rosendale. I'm a parent of two kids at Joyce Kilmer in West Roxbury. Today, I got my second dose of the vaccine. I'm a healthcare worker. And I did listen to you guys about, I have other things I want to discuss, but I did listen to you guys about COVID. And I just wanted you guys to know that even if you get the knowledge of the exposure early, you won't know if you have COVID during the early days. So it's actually, it's actually good to have a delay of 24 to 48 hours, because it will help with false negatives, which I've seen happen time and time again. Somebody finds out that somebody got COVID, they get tested, it's negative, they think they don't have COVID. Then they start to get symptoms about three days later. And so the delay, it doesn't really matter. Also, you guys should look into an app for like a COVID pass for the teachers and staff to do daily with a team of people they can call if they have symptoms. That really works on prevention. That's something that my job does. So I would like to see more, see fourth grade and fifth grade convert to letter grades, which will help BPS kids so they are not cheated on the exam schools when you convert it. I want to know, BPS plans to accommodate the kids in West Roxbury and Rosendale for seventh and eighth grade space, which is already limited in the building size, since most of the classes are staying for the next two years. These schools will be losing art spaces, resource rooms. And I know that, especially in the Kilmer, that's how we would accommodate the students. What are the plans to expand on these spaces? Also, what is the plan for K through eight spaces to have gymnasiums and auditoriums? And we have enough outdoor space to build these buildings up, but there's no plan in the foreseeable future to improve on these buildings. What are the plans to improve on other high schools other than exam schools? We have some of the top failing high schools other than the exam schools. Can we add home ec, shop, law class to the curriculum, which are important life skills to have, not just academics? What is BPS doing to help identify kids just falling behind, especially kids who are not reading by second grade or are struggling, to make sure that these kids are checked thoroughly for reading disability, dyslexics, ADHD, which also impacts your learning? When are we having MCAS tests? How are we going to get these kids caught up from being behind? I feel like an MCAS test would tell us how far behind our children are. Will there be summer school provided by BPS to help the children who are behind? I want to thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Ware.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So my name is Kathy Ware. I live in West Roxbury, and I have children at both the Orinberger and at Boston Latin School. My comments this evening are in regard to your consideration of the advanced work class, which you are having later in this meeting. I'd like you all to think about a student who resists going to school, but when he does, he struggles to stay engaged and constantly causes disruptions. Maybe a student with learning difficulties comes to mind. What comes to my mind is a student like my son, who, when in third grade, had the ability to handle a fourth-grade curriculum. He was bored. He was not getting his needs met. This had nothing to do with his amazing teacher. This was because in a classroom full of children with a wide range of abilities, the students who get the least attention are the ones who are doing well. These students are told to read a book when they are done with their assignments before everyone else, while the teacher works with the children who are struggling. Students like my son are basically told, "I know you can do more, go farther, but there just aren't the resources for that." Imagine telling that to a student who couldn't read. "We know you need more help, but there just aren't the resources for that." That would be unacceptable. A child who needs more challenge and who needs to move at a faster pace is a student with a special need just as much as a student who struggles to read. Once my son started AWC, his behavioral and emotional issues disappeared. He thrived. He loved school. His special needs were being addressed. The Advanced Work Class, as it stands, not watered down, is an amazing program that serves children like my son. As you consider its future, I ask that you keep students like him in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. Our next speaker is Sheri Kelleher. She'll be followed by Suzanne Engler, Ruby Reyes, William Zhao, and Duran Lee.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
My name is Sheri Kelleher. I'm a parent. I have two wonderful sons, one at Boston Latin, one at the Warren Prescott from Charlestown. What I would like to discuss is remote learning and the impact that being out of school for a year is going to have on my children. Educators worry about students falling behind over summer. Our children are not nearly as engaged in remote learning as they would be if they were in the classroom. We've heard talk of doing away with the MCAS for this year so that you won't be able to capture how much they've lost. Nothing has changed. A year later, it hasn't gotten any better, and in some cases, it's gotten worse. No one seems to be trying to address this. Yes, I appreciate that you're going to try and open schools. Yes, I appreciate that a year after my children were sent home, my younger son might finally walk into a building. But that's two days a week. And as somebody has already noted, that means 30 days in school at most. My older son won't go until April. How are you going to address this? How are you going to fill the gaps? How are you going to make it better for them? I also want to understand, I think somebody said that you're applying to be part of the pool testing, and that this is a six-week program. There's four months of school. I don't understand how six weeks covers the need for testing all of the students when we know they're not going to be vaccinated, and that's not being addressed. The broad's been providing this kind of service for multiple communities around the Boston metro area the entire school year, I believe. Why hasn't Boston jumped on this? Why aren't we doing more? Try and keep our people safe. Try and inform them as to whether they're sick. I appreciate that everybody is trying very hard, but it doesn't really feel like we're moving forward the way we need to. I look forward to continued updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Suzanne Engler. Could you please raise your hand virtually in Zoom if you're with us, Suzanne? Okay, I'm not seeing Suzanne. Ruby Reyes will be our next speaker.
My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. I'm also a Dorchester resident. Beja urges you to take leadership and sign a resolution supporting the Mass Association of School Committees and the State Teachers Union to cancel this spring's MCAS and access testing. BPS currently has 32 schools open with categories of those with only the highest needs allowed to return. Testing during a pandemic will further traumatize students and families, producing results that show that. Access is meant to measure the progress of English learners. Families should not have to bring their student or Chromebook to a school building to administer this exam, especially when the majority of BPS school buildings remain unopened. DESI is not communicating with families in their native language that access testing is not required or recommended. The reluctance of state officials to give clear information in multiple languages is immoral, unjust, and racist. Beja asks that you do what is right, but communicating with families in their native languages that access testing is voluntary, and they do not need to risk their physical or emotional safety. In addition to racist assessment practices, Beja once again asks that BPS create a moral budget in which you ask for what school communities actually need, rather than basing projections on enrollment primarily. Schools need additional funds to ensure high-quality learning, virtually and in-person. This school committee can advocate that DESI funds used for MCAS and S-Access testing be diverted to strengthen online and in-person instruction and create safe teaching and learning conditions. Beja demands no school budget cuts and no school closures. We continue to need quality leadership and direction that prioritizes students, parents, and educators, not more racism. We ask that you join the BSAC and Beja Town Hall tomorrow, on Thursday, January 28th, from 4:30 to 6:00 to learn from students, parents, and educators about their experience with online and person learning. They are the experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from William Zhao. He'll be followed by Duran Li, Eugenia Corbo, Marcy Carmody, and Joshua Pierce. If you could, please raise your hands in Zoom. William Zhao?
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Hi. My name is William Zhao. I'm a parent of a sixth grader who's in the exam school application pool. I just heard another parent who mentioned in her testimony that BPS has a design and exam school admission policy to disadvantage non-BPS students. I have found that it's true. BPS doesn't want non-BPS students to be overrepresented in the application pool. Therefore, the simulations allocate seats to zip codes based on the percentage of school-aged children in the code rather than the percentage of applicants in the zip code. This negatively impacted 12 zip codes, including several low-income zip codes. Rosendale, the code is due to- Resonale, the code zero-two-one-three-one, would have had six point eight percent of the total eight hundred fifty seats, based on applicants. But now we'll have a six point five percent based on all school-aged children. So, which is a loss of approximately three seats. A loss of three seats, it doesn't sound significant. However, for students who are not treated equally by the policy, it is a big deal. So, an admission policy designed to ensure that non-BPS students are not overrepresented in not, it is not a policy that treats all residents of Boston equally. So, please revise the zip code allocation model to ensure that all residents of Boston are treated equally in the admission process. And then the negative impact on the twelve zip codes, including several low-income zip codes. It's really worse. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not seeing our next speaker, Doran Li. If you're with us, could you please raise your hand virtually? We know you're with us. Okay. Let's go to Eugenia Corbo.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Eugenia Corbo. I'm a mom of two kids, K two and second grade at the Marioman Academy in East Boston. I have questions about a few topics and a few points I want to make. Regarding testing, I'm very glad to hear that we moved from three hundred tests available a week to weekly testing for teachers, but we can probably do better. As an example, teachers in Cambridge are offered testing twice a week. And how often will students be able to get tested in the pool testing program? Will they have access to weekly testing if so they choose? We won't really know if there's a symptomatic transmission among students or from students to staff if we're not doing ongoing asymptomatic testing. Will pool samples be run individually if a pool is positive? And if not, will students in a positive pool be offered immediately an individual PCR? And also, why aren't we even discussing rapid testing? Regarding the vaccine, what is the district doing about pushing to return teachers to their original place on the list? I understand they've been moved down. And could families enrolled in hybrid hold off returning until teachers have been vaccinated, if so they choose? And depending on vaccine availability over the summer, is BPS considering requiring the COVID vaccine for the next four years? I also have some questions on equity. Families have only until this Friday to make changes to their cohort selection. This is not fair, given that many schools have not yet given families all the details about what hybrid and remote will really look like. In any case, I ask that as soon as updates to this form are done on Friday, BPS release an updated report outlining the racial, socioeconomic, and neighborhood breakdown for hybrid and fully remote cohorts. And if yet again, it results in more minority families and families of color choosing remote, I urge you to add resources to improve the remote experience, minimizing or avoiding concurrent teaching, which is my next topic. My kids are currently enrolled for hybrid because of the need for socialization and the need to reduce screen time. But there may not be much socialization and my kids will need to have, to be at the computer at school, particularly my K-two kids, it seems. So how is concurrent teaching going to be an improvement, either in the classroom or from home? Even in the hands of the best teachers, and our teachers are absolutely amazing, both in-person and remote learning will suffer with this model. I know schools have been allowed to do creative scheduling, but not all the schools have the staffing needed to pull that off. And I honestly, I'm starting to doubt our decision of remaining in the hybrid model if my kid will sit at a computer at school. And regarding air quality, is there any plan to sample airflow and air quality so that the data can then be correlated with possible infection rates once kids are back in the classroom? And one more thing, if sports are okay, let younger kids use the playground in the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Marcy Carmody. She'll be followed by Joshua Pierce, Edith Bazil, Kathleen Shadavoyne, Megan Castro, and John Mudd. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Marcy Carmody?
Thank you, Boston School Committee, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. And thank you, Marty Martinez, for attending this meeting. My name is Marcy Carmody. I live in Charlestown and belong to an advocacy group, Voices for BPS Families. I'm here for my children and to speak on their behalf. I have three children in BPS schools. My children are not just a number. My oldest son, who is eleven, is part of the high priority group that was able to return to in-person in December. When he was home, he did not have a peer group or a group of friends that he was in touch with. There are articles out there about kids feeling lonely, anxious, and isolated while learning remotely. I know these articles are real because I live them. In-person school is a work in progress, and my son does spend time on Zoom in his classroom. But his school gives him a community, a place where he can feel like he's a part of a group and a place to belong. Being in school has had a hugely positive effect on him. I want to thank his teachers and all the staff for coming into school to teach and guide him and just being there for him. I am heartened to hear the rest of the high in-person priority students are returning in February, on February first. I'm confused why this has not been communicated more broadly. This is huge. Adhering to this timeline gives reassurance to many other families whose kids are scheduled to return in March and are choosing for them to return, able for them to return. I want to thank the committee, the superintendent, Boston Teachers Union, and the High In-Person Priority Task Force for making this happen. I especially want to thank Roxy Harvey from SpedPac, who every time I hear speak, I feel inspired. Having a child with special needs oftentimes means making life and family decisions based on that child, and for good reason. But I have two other children in BPS schools. I want them to set foot in their classrooms. My eight-year-old can't wait to see his friends, and my five-year-old won't, can't, and shouldn't be on a computer screen seven hours a day. I hope they go back in March, and I'm going to continue to advocate for them to return because that, because they matter. They matter to me. I want them to matter to the district, to the city of Boston, where they were born and raised, and I want them to matter to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joshua Pierce. If you're with us, could you please raise your hand? Joshua Pierce? Okay, our next speaker is Edith Bazil. Go ahead, Ms. Bazil.
Okay, there we go. Hi, my name is Edith Bazil. I'm a BPS graduate, a thirty-two-year BPS employee as teacher and administrator, and family member of current BPS student representing zero-two-one-two-five. My comments on advanced work classes. Just to give you some context, past BPS superintendent Dr. Tommy Chang sought to dismantle advanced work classes and create a more equitable program for all students. But there was immediate outrage and political fallout. So Dr. Chang created a parallel program in BPS called Excellence for All, focused on equity and high-quality rigorous instruction for all students. Dr. Chang's superintendency didn't last, and this administration has not discussed what is happening with the Excellence for All program Dr. Chang worked so hard to pilot. At Friday's Community Equity Roundtable, data presented showed that Black and Latinx students continue to face barriers to work, to advance work classes. Discussions around changing the admissions policies prompted protests from those who benefit from the system of white privilege, similar to what we heard when there was a proposal to change the admissions policy temporarily for exam school admissions. We heard everything except outright racist words, words that focus on entitlement, hard work, giftedness, words implying Black students are not gifted, don't work hard, aren't prepared, are not capable, and don't have parents who prioritize education. This rhetoric carries a clear tone of manipulation by white identity politics. It is an old tactic to uphold systems of white privilege, similar to the historical method that was used during the eighteen hundreds called the Southern Strategy. It was used by whites to maintain political power and to inflict pain on Black people by denying opportunity, stating we are undeserving and capable and lazy. It is a cover-up for a system of historical discrimination. I want to remind you that if you take your candle and light someone else's candle, you don't have less light, you have more light. The taxes collected from Black residents in Boston should not support anti-Black racist policies and made-up merit systems that harm Black children. Now is the time for BPS to get rid of the white identity admissions policies that attempt to discredit and deny the intellect of Black students as well as Black educators. We have heard no goals from BPS to address Black students specifically. BPS needs to set a priority agenda to repair the educational damage done to Black students. Now is the time to dismantle white entitlement, white privilege, and white legacy, because this is not democracy. BPS needs a priority agenda to address the historical injustice done to Black students in the city of Boston now. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Kathleen Shadavoyne.
Hey, good evening. That is a difficult testimony to follow, certainly. I'm a resident of Charlestown and a parent of two BPS students. I'm also a proud native of Dorchester and a graduate of BLS. My comments tonight relate to the exam school admissions policy change. With this change, BPS is introducing four new approaches. Number one, eliminating the exam. Number two, expanding the applicant pool. Number three, allocating seats based on zip codes. And number four, allocating seats to zip codes based on the percentage of school-aged children in that zip code. Every one of these new approaches represents a substantial change, but all four together is nothing short of seismic. My public comments this evening are targeted only at the fourth approach, allocating seats to zip codes based on the percentage of school-aged children in the zip code. I have previously testified that this approach is not race-neutral and does not increase socioeconomic diversity. Both strong reasons to reconsider using it. Now, I have another reason for BPS to reconsider using it. The motivation behind it. BPS's recent Freedom of Information Act response includes a comparison of the exam school applicant pool to BPS enrollment and highlights three zip codes where non-BPS students are overrepresented and five zip codes where BPS students are underrepresented. The text above the comparison explains that allocating seats based on the applicant pool is the reason for this over-under representation. As testimony tonight has emphasized, correcting for this by allocating seats based on all school-aged children ends up negatively impacting a total of twelve zip codes. The three overrepresented ones to varying degrees, but also collateral damage to another nine, including many low-income zip codes. Chinatown loses five seats. Dorchester, oh-two-one-two-two, loses twelve seats. The motive behind this approach is questionable at best, and the harm to this year's applicants is very real. I respectfully asked, ask BPS to reconsider this approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Castro.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee Members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Megan Castro. I'm a parent to three students in BPS. I live in Charlestown. I'm a member of the group Voices for BPS Families. I'm here again tonight to voice my plea for Boston schools to open for in-person learning. First, thank you for inviting Mr. Martinez to be here tonight. It shed a light on the decision-making process behind school opening. One of my children is an HIPP student who is able to return to school in September. I want to thank you all for the effort to make this happen and to have that number expanding next week. So exciting for the, all the students who get to start next week. His ability to be in school has been a gift for both him and our family. Let me share with you why. He has been able to see his teachers and therapists in person. He gets the professional attention that he needs, which my husband and I are not trained to provide. But as much of an impact of being with his therapist in person, he has a regular schedule and regular responsibilities, which are essential to his development and the potential for him to become a functional adult despite his disabilities. It's also a huge impact on his self-esteem, because he can be independent through all of this, and I want that for all of the kids in Boston who are still stuck at home feeling down. He was not learning well on a computer. This is not just because of his disabilities. He was suffering like so many general education students are still with online learning. His younger sister is in K-one. She's not doing well with online learning either. She asks me daily when she gets to go to school with her brother. She's four years old. She needs to be in person with his teachers as much as he does. Please keep the March first day that has been promised for the youngest students. I have yet to tell her of the date because I'm still nervous that BPS will pull out the rug on this, as it has in the past. I hope you prove me wrong. Mr. Martinez used the word essential earlier tonight. School is essential for these littlest learners. Please don't let them down by any more delays. We, as parents, are banking that you will follow through on that schedule that has been set. But the issue that keeps coming to my mind is September. I hope that behind the scenes, you are all thinking of this too. Please tell me that you are. I'm worried that our kids will not be going full-time in September. I anticipate the reason that BPS will give for continued two-days-a-week school will be transportation. Please start making plans for this now. Do you have enough buses? Let's make sure this planning is beginning now. They must be in school five days a week in September. Let me repeat, they must be in school five days a week in September. It will not be acceptable if the limitation of buses is your excuse next August. Boston calls itself a city on a hill and a leader in education. Let's prepare for that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is John Mudd.
Good evening. My name is John Mudd. I'm a longtime education advocate in Boston, and I'm a resident of Cambridge, Massachusetts. As I said at the end of the school committee retreat last week, I think it extremely important for you to keep, as your number-one overarching goal, the elimination of opportunity and achievement gaps. I was heartened, actually, to hear the opportunity and achievement gap task force yesterday that you will be reviewing whatever documents come out of the retreat and take this into account. I'm obviously very disappointed that there apparently will be no change in the package that is going out to the community for the hearings in February. I think it, I want to understand, and I think the community needs to understand, what does this mean? Are the listed goals actually intended to supersede the 2025 strategic plan? Or the approved, approved opportunity and achievement gap policy? Do these goals replace the goals, commitments, and measures in the 2025 policy? For example, how should we, as advocates and community members, present this to parents and the community when you go out for the hearings? Do we point out that the school committee is considering eliminating the achievement, eliminating the goal of ending the achievement gap as one of your priorities? eliminating the goal of ending the achievement gap as one of your priorities? Or lessening attention to black and Latino students, less highlighted attention? I think that would be a serious and unfortunate mistake, obviously. And I would hope you could make it very clear to all of us what you're actually taking to the community and what that will mean in terms of your priorities for the future. I would hope that in the listening sessions, you would also make provision to have an opportunity for back and forth discussion between members of the community and committee members. We don't need just another time when the committee listens to the community and gets, and the community gets no response. Thank you for hearing me. Good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver Davila, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to all the speakers for your time this evening and taking time to speak with us about your concerns. I am going to move on to our first action item tonight, which is our grants for approval totaling $2,143,597. So I would like to open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Okay, if there are no further questions, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented.
Moved.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is the membership in charge for the exam schools admission task force. You'll recall that on our last meeting, I presented for the committee's consideration a proposal for the charge and membership of this new task force, which evolved from the superintendent's exam schools admissions working group. As a task force of the school committee, this group will be subject to mass open meeting laws, ensuring transparency and providing opportunities for community engagement and input throughout the process. I will briefly review the proposed membership again. The co-chairs for this task force will be Michael Kontampasis, who is the former Boston Latin School Head of School and former BPS Superintendent. Co-chair Tanisha Sullivan, who is the president of the NAACP Boston Branch and former BPS Chief Equity Officer. Pastor Sam Acevedo, who is also the co-chair of Opportunity Achievement Gaps Task Force. Acacia Agueda, who is a parent at the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science. Matt Craigor, Mental Health Legal Advisors Committee, Supreme Judicial Court. Tanya Freeman Wisdom, who is the head of school of the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science. Catherine Grassa, who is the principal of the Curly K to eight school. Xena Lum, a parent at Boston Latin Academy. Danielle Morales, who is a student at Boston Latin Academy. Zoe Nagasawa, was a student at Boston Latin School. Rachel Garrett, who is the head of school of the Boston Latin School. Roseanne Tong, who is an independent researcher and the mother of a BPS alumni and also is on the ELL task force. Tamara White, who's a parent at the Philbrick Elementary School. And I just want to thank all of you for your willingness to serve. And I will now read the proposed charge again from our last meeting. Building upon the work initiated by the superintendent's exam schools admission criteria working group, the Boston School Committee Exam Schools Admission Task Force shall develop a set of recommendations for the admissions policy for Boston Public Schools exam schools. The desired outcome is to expand the applicant pool and create an admissions process that will support student enrollment at each of the exam schools such that rigor is maintained and the student body better reflects the ratio, socioeconomic and geographic diversity of all students K to 12 in the city of Boston. The task force shall consider use of the new NWEA assessment and other factors and leverage learning from a full review of the implementation of the school year 2122 admissions criteria as well as a thorough review of practices in other districts. That is the proposed charge. I'm recommending that the task force report back to the Boston School Committee by May 26 of 2021. This will allow for the committee to consider the recommendations, provide feedback and take action prior to the start of school year 2122 and the next admission cycle. I will now open it up to the community if there are any last questions or comments. Okay, if there's no further questions, I will entertain.
Sorry, sorry, Alex.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand up.
No, no, it was, it was getting it unmuted and all that kind of stuff. So I, I want to take a pause and say that deeply appreciate the efforts going into this task force. As people know, you know, I, I was ambivalent about it, but I really think that this is, it's come a long way. The charge is clear and accurate and very useful. It's going to help us be more transparent and open and have opportunities for the community to, to, to participating in that task force meetings to communicate thoughts and ideas like we hear a lot of during our meetings. And it will be very focused and be able to people to respond. So I want to thank, thank you superintendent and chair for bringing this forward in such a useful way. And I look forward to hearing the results and considering ways in which we can make this system more equitable and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. And also, yes, I want to definitely thank the superintendent and the vice chair for their help as well. So if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the membership in charge for the exam schools admission task force as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I see Ms. Robinson is the second. Is there any discussion or objection to this motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I could say since we're in the discussion portion, I agree with Dr. Coleman's comments and I, I appreciate that this is going to be a public process as we hear German school committee meetings and public comment. There's a lot of attention to this and so I, I appreciate all the members who are willing to serve. I thank you for folks who added to it, that incorporated feedback from the committee and others, including the multiple students. I, I do hope this committee really works hard at looking at this year's admission and what the impact has been, even as they think through, you know, a potential long-term solution to the admissions. Would love to really get an in and out. And I believe, you know, it is in the charge, but I just want to make sure to call it out that they spent just as much time looking at what they had recommended to us and what we approved and what the impact has been as they do in thinking through a permanent change along the lines of the charge. So thank you for the thought that you put into the charge. And I look forward to this group's work.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments while we're on this discussion piece? Okay. Thank you all. Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Mr. Tran had some technical difficulties. He's trying to hop back in.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you, everyone. And again, agree with the vice chair. Thank you to the working group who put in a lot of time already and is going to put in more time. And thank you to the superintendent and her team as well who worked on that and will continue to work on that. Our final report this evening is the superintendent's request for flexibilities on certain BPS policies due to COVID for school year 2020, 2021. And at this time, I'm going to turn things over to the superintendent for her remarks. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief in my comments and I'll go through the report so that you will be able to make a good decision about giving some flexibility. So I'm going to ask them to put that up. Great. So get in the screen and we'll go. Great. Thank you. As you recall, last year I asked for some suspension in policies due to the pandemic. There had been some changes that the commissioner had made to attendance and graduation. And we also recently, as you just discussed, saw some implications with exam schools and the admission process in terms of trying to respond to not being able to test. We have a similar situation with advanced work class that I want to bring to your attention so that we can get some flexibility in dealing with some of these policies that just don't work right now during this pandemic for our students. Next slide. So the first one I want to talk about is the promotion and retention policy. This is one that discusses how students are promoted to the next grade based on earning a passing grade in identified classes and earning a passing score on some identified assessments. So I'll give two pieces to this. One is about the grades and the flexibility and the overall policy. And then on the next slide, I will speak to assessment. Some of the key changes, back one side. Some of the key changes are to request a pause of the current policy for this school year. I'm also recommending that the final sign off on all retentions are with the school leader. That students with academic concerns receive a personalized student success plan. That summer learning be provided to students whose parents request consideration for retention. And that summer school tutoring and other supplemental learning may be required. Of course, I shared with you this previously, so I don't need to go over the data, but you, we did see that there was a decrease in identified students who, to be retained between June and October of 2020 compared to the prior year in 2019. Next slide. I want to speak about attendance. As you know, I have spoken about attendance before as we have talked about no credits and said that I would be bringing this policy. And currently, a student must attend school for at least a half a day to be marked present. A student with three or three plus unexcused absences in a term or 12 plus unexcused absences for the school year will be graded no credit and referred to the student support team. Principals bear final responsibility for improving attendance in their schools and ensuring staff compliance. And teachers are to record attendance daily. There's been some key changes this year around attendance. The DESI has a summer memo on attendance clarifying that normal attendance expectations and policies apply to the 2021 school year. They also require teachers to take attendance for both remote and in-person students daily. Teachers should identify alternative methods to determine asynchronous attendance. And new DESI structured learning time requirements passed recently also require daily synchronous learning time. And some of the relevant data, you see on the right-hand side around our attendance, which is slightly lower than previous years. Next slide. Then getting back to the promotion policy and how that relates to these recommendations and asking for the flexibility around assessments is that students must pass certain benchmarks in ELA and math to be promoted to the next grade level and earn a passing grade. Students who do not meet at least one benchmark in required grade levels must attend a summer program. And students in grade 11 and 12 who have not passed MCAS should attend a summer program. And as you know from previous reporting, the MCAS is, was not given last year. And also it's going to be significantly delayed this year if given at all. And we also had to pause our own interim assessments. So we are now asking for key changes that are working with our school leaders around their administration and the expectations around ELA and math aside assessments in each grade. And we're asking them to do that at least twice at the school level. And they may use the district-supported assessment, which is the map fluency, the map growth or our own BPS interims, or they can choose their own assessment. And so just some recent data across grade levels, K two to 11, we had about 23,000 of our students participate across 99 schools in the fall window. And the participation in our interims was about 29% of BPS students in grades two to 11 participate in our English Language Arts interim assessments of the first round across 62 schools. And 33% of BPS students in grades two through 11 participated in math one across 64 schools. Next slide. And then there's been similar changes to graduation that were last year. And actually, it was just announced today by the commissioner around the CD changes. So students are required in current policy to satisfy the Massachusetts State Competency Determination requirements by passing the MCAS in ELA, math and science. And then some key changes were made in spring of 2020 where BESI authorized an emergency waiver for the CD requirement by which students may demonstrate competency in a tested subject through district certification of student completion of an aligned course. And BESI, they were voting on it and they did vote to extend this. And the commissioner allowed us to inform us of that today. 12th grade students who earned incomplete for term three are guaranteed the opportunity to participate in summer remote learning and improve their term three grade. And what you see in the right is, you know, 79% of the current senior class, a class of 2021, have already satisfied all of their CD requirements. And 14 MCAS appeals have been submitted so far this year with planned submission of 50 additional ones in February. And we'll continue to assess where students are with their incompletes, their credit readiness and their CD requirements and make those submissions throughout the remainder of the spring. Next slide. We heard some testimony today on advanced work class. We did present this to our Equity Roundtable on Friday and received feedback into the policy. Currently, the AWC policy, advanced class policy create, is determined by a student's score on the Terranova Assessment, which is offered in the fall to all third grade students. It is also offered on select weekend test dates during the fall for students in grades four and grades five who don't have a previous Terranova score. Because we had the difficulty in being able to assess due to so many students being remote, similar to exam ACT, SAT and MCAS, we were not able to give the Terranova test this school year. So we're asking for a pause the current test requirement policy for one year, which impacts five schools. That impacts the Condon, the Jackson Man, the Murphy, the Orenberger and the Quincy Lower Schools where they have some or all of, of part of an AWC class. School leaders will select from two pathway options for fourth grade AWC assignment. No new students will No new students will be assigned in grades five and six this year. All students within the fourth grade will access AWC program rigor, including access to world language and curriculum supports. That's one option. The other option is that parents and students currently enrolled in an AWC school can opt into AWC up to the number of seats that are available. If requests exceed seat availability, schools will make the decision on the AWC enrollment. We also will launch, we are recommending launching a working group to look at the long-term recommendations in light of declining demand and enrollment and equity considerations. AWC seats have been open in the past to about, it was about 50 of them to students throughout the district. And if there are students that want AWC who are not currently enrolled at the school offering AWC, they then can work with our welcome services office and work on the normal transfer process and transfer into a school if seats are available at that school in the fourth grade and request to be put at that school and then the school leader would work with that family on the proper placement for their child. Some interesting data around AWC that I shared to with the equity round table on Friday is that AWC in fourth grade has declined by over half in the last seven years from 303 students in 1415 to 116 in school year 2021, for which there was 141 applicants. Fewer than 20 students per year enroll in AWC from outside the district. And the majority of students enrolling in AWC come from the same school, about 53%. And over 90% of the 116 students entering AWC in fourth grade this year are enrolled in the three schools currently at the Murphy, the Quincy and the Orenberger. To the right, you can see how the demographics are in terms of students invited and then actually students who enroll. So there's a significant shift in the number of Asian and white students who actually enroll compared to the number of students who are invited. Next slide. After I sent you all the draft of the presentation, Ms. Robinson asked for some further breakdown of the demographic enrollment information by this, by all of the schools. And so I share this with you at the request of Ms. Robinson. The enrollment in grade three by race at the schools overall is much more diverse than the grade four AWC enrollment by race. As you can tell, it matches similarly to what you saw in the earlier slide. You know, where you saw these discrepancies between who was invited and who actually enrolled. And now you can see the discrepancies between grade three enrollment overall in a school. And then once they move to grade four, the shift in the demographics of those classrooms and how that looks. So I believe that's the end of my presentation. And I'm happy to take questions. I do also have three of the current school leaders that I would like to invite to just speak about how they have engaged with their teachers and community around this situation and issue. And, you know, we've been meeting with them, trying to problem solve for over a month. And we try to resolve what was the best way to move forward. And then now we've asked them to continue to engage with their school, their parents, their teachers. And I'd like for them to just give an opportunity to share with you their best thinking I have with me tonight. Cynthia Suho from the Quincy, John Travis, principal at the Orenberger, and Courtney Shepik from the Murphy School. And we'll start with John Travis from the Orenberger.
Thank you so much, Dr. Casellas, and thank you so much, members of the school committee. I actually wanted to say as well that I'm here with my co-principal at the Beethoven Orenberger K eight school. Ed Puleyafico is also here with me on the call. But I'll be speaking on behalf of our school since the advanced work class is primarily in our upper grade. But I just wanted to give a shout out to my co-principal. So we've been engaged in this conversation with the school district over the last couple of months. And we value, deeply value our advanced work class program at our school and value creating opportunities to increase access to more students to this really excellent and wonderful curriculum. And we've been working with the district and beginning conversations with our families. And we'll be continuing to have conversations with families. I currently have five or six families right now who've taken me up on direct phone calls in my current third grade so that we're ready to talk about it. And we're going to be having a community conversation this coming Monday across our entire school to talk about what this path forward might look like for us. But so far for our initial best thinking, we believe that we can actually expand opportunity and access to students and families so that any student or family at the Orenberger School that is interested in advanced work for next year would be able to gain access to it. And we believe that by increasing access to the program for next year and expanding it, we can continue to build proof points and learn more about how more students can gain access to this excellent and rigorous curriculum at our school. And we're excited to engage in our families, our community around those conversations here in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Appreciate that and appreciate your leadership. Ms. Cynthia Suho.
Hi. Good evening, school committee members, and thank you, Dr. Casellas, for inviting me here tonight. As John mentioned, I do also very much appreciate all the conversations that we've had with the district. So I'm speaking tonight, tonight as the proud principal of my alma mater, the Quincy Elementary School. We serve about 800 students in K zero through grade five. And we have very diverse programs at the school, including general education. We have a Chinese language SCI program, multiple disability, early intervention, learning disability, multiple disability program, inclusion both in our general ed and our SCI strands and currently advanced work class, which is being discussed tonight. So the Quincy Elementary definitely understands the many complexities and also the fidelity of concerns around administer and assessments throughout this pandemic. And we definitely support the district's proposal to pause the AWC eligibility assessment for next school year and also to establish a working group to make a long-term recommendation for the AWC program. Something really special about the Quincy Elementary is that we offer a K to 12 pathway to Quincy Upper. And the Quincy Upper is an international baccalaureate or IB school. They're credited in the middle years and diploma program. And as we build a strong foundation at the elementary level for our students to enter into the IB program at the upper school, we've elected to work towards our IB accreditation in the primary years program. So our school's vision is to really prepare the next generations to be contributing global citizens. And we have incredible staff that have been engaging in developing high-quality and rigorous IB units of study. And we feel like the most viable option in the proposed plan, which we will be presenting to our school community this Friday evening, where all current third grade families have been invited and is also open to our school community, is option one. This option really offers curriculum support for our staff to embed any necessary resources and materials, practices to ensure access to high quality and rigorous curriculum through our IB units of study and also to increase the foreign language opportunities across the grade level. And I'll just end by saying, you know, in Dr. Casellas's words, just to remember to measure all of our decisions and student success. And that's kind of what we've been thinking about at the Quincy and, you know, looking at all the programs we have. How can we create, you know, a program that we can offer all of our students? And that's what we hope to do through international baccalaureate.
Thank you, Ms. Suho. Appreciate it. And now we'll hear from Ms. Courtney Shepik at the Murphy School.
Hi. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Casellas, for allowing me to speak tonight about advanced work class at the Murphy School. Good evening, Boston School Committee members. So I'm Courtney Shepik. I'm the proud principal of the Murphy K eight in Dorchester. I'm also a resident of South Boston and a BPS alumna and a BPS parent. The Murphy School does, like Cynthia and John's school, serves roughly 950 students from all over the city of Boston, but most families come from the surrounding Dorchester neighborhoods. We pride ourselves on strong core instructional practices from K to eight. At the same time, we value our teamwork and collaboration, which is needed daily to serve the wide range of learners from kindergarten through eighth grade. We believe that the suspension of the Terranova test, that we will have the opportunity to expand greater access to our current Murphy students to the rigorous teaching and learning that occurs in our advanced work class program. We also look at this pivotal year for us to collaborate across the grade level teams and to make incremental steps towards ensuring all of our fourth grade students have access to rigor and strong targeted instruction in both math and English language arts. Our grade four teaching team consists of experienced teachers with certifications that range from National Board to ESL certifications, special education and one doctoral degree in curriculum and teaching mathematics. We really plan this year to capitalize and leverage in the strength of this teaching team as we will provide the leadership and an instructional coach who will support the coursework to ensure that we're providing rigorous instruction and appropriate pacing for all our learners across the grade four, across grade four. So at the Murphy, we're going to continue to commit to accelerated coursework, including the AWC historical sort of independent and collaborative extension projects. We're going to commit to foreign language instruction across the grade level. We're committing to access for all grade four students to both science and STEM blocks. We're also committing to specific periods of the week where students meet in targeted learning groups and are exposed to various nonfiction text sets where students have opportunities to read, speak and write in small groups. We started our engagement with our teachers and families this past week by sharing that the superintendent would be making her recommendations to the school committee this evening. And we're going to follow up with our current third grade families tomorrow night in a Zoom call. These Zoom calls have interpretation in both Spanish and Vietnamese that our families can ask questions and discuss their ideas about the impact of this decision going forward. And additionally, this topic will be covered at our Murphy Monthly Equity Roundtable and of course at our Murphy School Site Council. So we really find it a great opportunity to discuss with families our current vision for the Murphy moving forward and to highlight what we believe that all students need and how we as a grade four team are going to provide a well-rounded and academically rigorous curriculum for all of our students. So I thank you for the opportunity.
So as you can see, Madam Chair, I think I should have the principals come and present every single school committee because they're just amazing leaders. And, you know, it's a testament to when you are working collaboratively with your school leaders and they're working collaboratively with their teachers. And then as a whole team, working with their school community, you can come up with solutions that really are in the best interest of kids. And like Ms. Suho said, you know, I'd like to say, measure everything in child benefit, you know. And so with that, I'd like to entertain any questions that you have of us or of the school leaders. And I also have Ms. Roberts on the call with us today, who has been working closely with the team. And as you know, she did such a good job on exam schools as well. She's such a great leader on some of these, you know, nuttier topics that we have to deal with during this pandemic.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you to all the school leaders. It's always really great to hear directly from you because you are on the ground. And we, none of us sitting here in the schools, so, you know, we, we, we'd love to hear your thoughts and opinions. And obviously, you know, in collaboration, making decisions. So I'd like to open it up if any school committee members have questions. I see Dr. Rivera has her hand up. And please remember, five minutes, two questions and staff response also to be time limited as well.
So thank you, and thanks to the school leaders for joining us to give us a little more insight about future plans. I just want to point out first thanking also Ms. Edith Bazil for her testimony. Because that's where, where I'm really disturbed is, and it didn't come up even in this discussion about, you know, the fact that 90% of the students are coming from three schools. 71% are white and Asian. 60% of fourth graders at the Orenberger are white students. I mean, this is just not acceptable. I never heard these statistics before and I'm very, very disturbed by them. I would also like to see how there's also, there's a linkage then between these schools also beating the feeders to the exam schools. And so that's some data that I would like to see us collect to see if there's also these same schools, right, are perpetuating that same racial inequities in our system that we need to change. So I not only, you know, support the, the, you know, the suspension of the test now, but also in the future. We really, really, this is so unacceptable. And so how do we also, you know, again, address this racial inequities? We're talking about excellence for all was what, you know, we should really be, you know, expanding that excellence for all. So yeah, I'm just speaking out of just really seeing these, these statistics that it's just, I don't know how we can say that we can become an anti-racist school district if we don't address at a school levels, right, where there's even inequities within a particular school. So it's not even a question. I guess my question is, how can we continue to expand the excellence for all? And really also, again, align what we're doing with the exam schools as well as what we're doing with, with AWC. Because this is clearly, the data is very much aligned. And again, I thank Ms. Bazil for pointing out the statistics about the black students. I want to elevate that if we look at that data, the Latinx students have the worst outcomes too. So, yeah, I, again, just, I do thank the school leaders, but, but this is really unacceptable data that I'm hearing. And I hope we can, we can do better and expand excellence for all.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. We presented some of this data to our equity round table, our district-wide equity round table this past Friday. We will have, we got a lot of questions about EFA, which is excellence for all. And we will be discussing it again on this Friday's equity round table because there want, the equity round table wanted to go deeper into the evaluation around excellence for all and talk about that and talk about AWC advanced work class as well. So we'll continue this conversation. That's why I am also requesting a working group to dig deeper into it and then make some future recommendations. Because this policy's change is just for one year.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. James. You're on mute.
There you go. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. You're back on mute now.
My computer is going through a lot right now. My apologies. But please let me know if there's any point where you guys cannot hear me. I just really wanted to echo everything that Dr. Rivera said because I had already had a few notes written down about AWC. I find the, I find the data to be really, really disappointing and quite on, like, just absolutely unacceptable. And it's really saddening to hear because, you know, I feel like we keep going back to our system. our system having embedded anti-black, anti-Latinx, anti-racist policies and infrastructure that prohibits black and brown students from succeeding. And furthermore, we're setting them up to enter the system when they graduate, a system that's ready to use their faults against them and put them in prison, quite frankly. Mass incarceration, everything from mass incarceration to exploiting them not knowing X, Y, and Z in the educational field. And I just think that it's really, really critical that we, we treat this as an all hands on deck issue. I want to thank the superintendent for, you know, starting to think about a working group to address AWC. I'd like to see this working group be formulated as soon as possible. And I look forward to seeing, you know, as many parents and students on there as possible to really shed light on what's going on because I think that they're really at the front and center when it comes to this. So everything else that I have to say, Dr. Rivera nailed it on the head, and I just wanted to put a big emphasis on that. And then I wanted to, I wanted to talk about attendances in schools. Well, well, first, I guess I'll wait till the second round. I guess my first, my, my question for right now is, with all these policy changes, how are these being communicated to parents, students, and families? It's the middle of the year. We have about five more months left in the school year. And I think, I think a lot of students like myself and a lot of parents believe that things are just going to continue the way they've been ever since the beginning of the school year. And I think, you know, they, they want to, how are we going to efficiently and adequately get this information out?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we'll work with our communications team and also our school leaders to help us, you know, our three school leaders here just said that they would have their own parent meetings and then they would also discuss it with their Equity Roundtables and their parent councils. So those are some methods that our school leaders will also help us in order to get the word out.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. James. We'll go back around if you have more questions. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentations. I guess one of the questions I've had for a long time around this whole, the whole fourth grade, the AWC and the Excellence for All is at what point will we just sort of stop and take a look overall at what are the best practices for fourth grade education? You know, what do we take from each of these programs that allows us to educate all of our fourth graders in a rigorous, you know, appropriate program? You know, you begin to hear in some of the testimony issues around, you know, you know, children who are disruptive or whatever to the education of other children. As a district, you know, I thought we were committed to, you know, inclusion, inclusion learning. And so how do we inclusion in inclusion classrooms, take a look at the kind of teaching and learning that needs to go on at the fourth grade level? Because our fourth grade obviously leads us on to the work that needs to go into the fifth and sixth grade to get us to the exam schools or other opportunities for students. And it feels like we've really got to go back and not look at who is included, but look at who has been consistently excluded from these rigorous opportunities. The other issue is about enrollment practices. And I know several years ago, I went through and to try to understand how in a district that has very small proportionate numbers of students that are white and Asian, that there would be schools in which they are 40, 50% of the students. And then, and then again, we look at what are the opportunities in those schools? They, they are sometimes disproportionately offering some things that other schools are not. So I said, in addition to just enrollment at the fourth grade level at AWC, I really feel we need to go back and take a closer look at enrollment overall in, in schools. If one of our goals is to have, you know, a more balanced within the numbers of students that of different groups that come into our schools, of making sure that opportunities at all grade levels are really being equitably distributed in many of our schools. So I, you know, again, I would just like to understand, as we look at these schools where there are some very disproportionate
Yeah.
folks from one group or the other, how does that occur?
Yeah.
How do we get there?
Yeah. Ms. Robinson, those are really good questions. And of course, we need to do a better job of having these kinds of opportunities across all of fourth grade, but really the whole vertical academic grades. And so you have to have a vertical alignment from, as you know, early childhood all the way up through 12th grade. And so that's within the curricular frameworks that you build. And then, you know, with any special programming that you would have to add rigor, whether that's adding world languages across a certain grade level or multiple grade levels, adding science blocks as Ms. Sheppick was talking about, or adding primary years, like a discrete curricular program on a K-12 pathway like Ms. described with the primary years and International Baccalaureate Program. There's a number of ways to add the rigor. And so that's something that we will need to look at in the future as we look at our, our grade configuration and as we strengthen our academic plan. Also, the question about how many of the exam school invites come from these schools? 215 of the 1,029 grade seven exam school invites went to AWC participants. So 21% of invites went to kids who were in AWC programs. Just, I know that that question was asked and I got the answer.
Excuse me, Superintendent. Do we also know what percentage of our, those seats went to kids who were coming outside of the district?
We do know that information. Ms. Monica Roberts might be able to find that information prior to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, because it'd be good just to know in, in terms of our general ed students, what percentage overall of seats are going to those who haven't had one particular additional support or another?
That'd be great. I'd be glad to get you that information.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Vice Chair O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the comments of my fellow members so far. I just want to peel the onion back a little bit on this because Excellence for All was designed to basically move us away from AWC. And a number of school leaders stepped up and said, we're going to offer rigor to all of our students, not just have separate tracking. And so the interesting superintendent is part of the working group. If they also analyze not just what to do with AWC, but potentially how excellence is all, how excellence for all is going, what's working about it, what needs more support, and, and how we can prove that. Because obviously, that's the goal, right, that all of our students have exposure to rigor across the entire district. And so I love your thought process on that. But I also want to compliment you and call out to my fellow members that, you know, just like you realize the problem with the exam school test and try to come up with an alternative, you have looked at the, the recognition that we can't do a Terranova test this year. And instead of just strictly saying, okay, well, here's another way we're going to decide how people get into AWC, you've stopped and stepped back and said, my interpretation in looking at what you presented in here when you talk about it, is you have stopped and stepped back and said, how do we feel about AWC overall? And not only that, when you, you showed us that data about who's taking advantage of it right now, which to me really raises the question about the Terranova test and what must be wrong with that. And, and as we all are, as I believe most of us know, it's a very quick test that's given really without warning, without prep, that type of thing. And it's very early on in our student's career, and then all of a sudden, it's identifying them as ready. So and then I'm interested in the difference between the students that were invited and actually enrolled. So clearly, there were a lot of parents who saying, even though the child was invited, they didn't want it. And that's a concern as well. So the fact that you looked at the test, but then stepped back and said, okay, so what do we do different? And what I'm most impressed by in your proposal is you have given the school leaders alternatives to talk about with their communities and, and to engage. And to have three of the school leaders here and each of them talk about, I'm working with my teachers, I'm working with my staff, I'm going to be having community meetings, we're going to be explaining, here's where we think we're going to go. But the fact that they're being given alternatives, it says to me, you are saying what's important to you, but you're also building collaboration with your team. And I think that's a very important message that people have to understand as well. So I just want to say, I, I obviously support you having the flexibility. This, you know, we can't do a Terranova test, but I appreciate you stepping back and saying, is the Terranova test really the right way to go? And how can we think differently about this? So that we're expanding, either expanding rigor to every student or giving some alternatives if it makes sense within that community. And I deeply appreciate the three school leaders talking thoughtfully about your schools and where you're going with them. And I love the fact, I didn't hear from you, Mr. Travis, but at least two are also BPS grads. I love, you know, that there's a pipeline here of people who are BPS grads and then become teachers and then become school leaders. I know that's also a passion of yours, Superintendent, to have more of our students become teachers and school leaders in our system. So I have to call that out when I, when I hear that. But I'm appreciative of the direction that you're going on this. And I want to make sure folks were aware of that. And, and so my only question is, do you see an opportunity for this working group to also look at Excellence for All? And, and how we, you know, what has worked, what hasn't worked, what needs to be strengthened, and how we move that forward so that we have opportunities for our students across the entire district?
Yes, that's a really good question, Mr. O'Neil. And thank you for the compliments of the team and the school leaders here. I would say that we would need to absolutely consider EFA. That is why we're bringing it to the Equity Roundtable this Friday as well. Because the concepts of Excellence for All are the right concepts. I think where we have maybe as a district not supported our school leaders enough in terms of the implementation. And so I think we want to make sure that we, whenever we do a program, like the primary years program or a science-based program or Excellence for All, we need to make sure that we support our school leaders and we give them the resources that they need to really implement it well. So I think that that's, that's really important. And we'll have the working group look at both Excellence for All as a strategy and then also what to do just in this particular case with the AWC.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Mr. James, you still have your hand up. Did you have more questions?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then, thank you. Yes, so, yeah, two, so a comment. I believe you mentioned, Superintendent, that the policy that comes from, that's going to come from the AWC working group will be a one-year policy. I actually think that it should be a policy that is just adopted permanently. I think that this, I think that it's very clear that AWC has anti-black, you know, and just racist infrastructure embedded within it. And I think it's just time to dismantle it, get rid of it, and build it up from the ground up. And I think this, and you know, I know we're not on the topic, but I think the same thing with exam schools. You know, I think we've adopted a really strong policy, always could be better, can be improved. But I think that, you know, we keep coming back to this trend of standardized tests. And we heard Dr. Kendi at the exams, at the October meeting, say that it is a, it is strategically used to be to harm black and brown students and communities. And I just think that, you know, we keep coming back to these systems, exam school admissions policy, the test for that, AWC, the test for that. I just think it's time to get rid of it and build from the ground up a more equitable, fair system that works for all of our students. So I just wanted to say that. And then on the matter of attendances.
Can I, can I quickly just say, Mr. James, that the policy flexibility I'm asking for now is one year, but the working group will come up with a recommendation for a permanent policy?
Thank you so much for that clarification, Superintendent. Love to hear it. And then for attendances, I'm, I, I was trying to find the, the dish, the, the, the school district in the United States that does this. But I have a friend who has been admitted to Columbia as well, who lives in a different part of the country. And their school, she communicated to me that their school district allows students to take in, in an academic year, up to seven days off called a mental health days, where it can be sort of excused. And I just, you know, I just, I, I talked to you behind the scenes about attendance and, you know, the attendance policy and how we can better, and how it can be less punitive against our students. And I think because of the amount, especially during this time, because the amount of stress that our students are under, both under the, both under the education system and the pandemic and everything going on in the world, from our political landscape to, you know, their own loved ones getting COVID, I think it's really critical that we implement some type of structure or policy that will allow our students to be able to have that space and that, you know, that chance and that opportunity to say, you know what, like I'm, I was just up for, you know, over, I don't know, 15 hours doing work. I'm really, I've been really stressed out this past few weeks. I'm going to take off a mental health day, and I don't think that that should be penalized. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. James. I need some of those too. So if you can advocate for me. Ms. Robinson, and then, wait, sorry, we'll go with Dr. Coleman because he hasn't had an opportunity and then I'll come.
Okay.
I actually took my hand back down because Mr. James spoke my mind.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Coleman. Ms. Robinson, and then we'll go back to Vice Chair O'Neil and then.
Okay. Yeah, I just had a quick question that I'm not sure there's an answer to tonight, but I would be interested in finding out, what is the cost either per student or per class for the three different versions of fourth grade, you know, fourth grade? What does it cost for an Excellence for All class versus an AWC class versus our general fourth grade class? And at some point, if that, if I could just get that information. Thank you.
Certainly, we can get that for you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Did you have your hand back up? No. Mr. James? No. Ms. Robinson, you still have your hand up?
I'm catching it down.
Okay, great. Thank you. I, I, I wanted to say again, thank you to all the school leaders for being here this evening with us. And I just want to, my own comments, just point out that I think Ms. Soho, I'm not sure if I'm saying your name correctly. I apologize if I am not.
It's Soho.
Yeah, Soho. Okay, thank you, Ms. Soho. I really appreciate the model of your school. And I think, you know, my, my, the question that just kept coming up is, how do we, how do we do that? So how do we have, you know, a strong curriculum across all the grades? And, you know, I've, I heard some of the testimony, I think Ms. Bazil said it best, I think my candle inspired her when she talked about, you know, lighting the candle. And, and, you know, when you light a candle, you can light it for everyone. And I absolutely agree with that. And I think that, you know, what, what is sad is that the pitting of one student against another, when all of our students should have rigor and, you know, should have access to everything. I think what Ms. Robinson said really resonated with me around, if we're an inclusion district, you know, this doesn't seem like inclusion to me. And I think, yes, we have, you know, students. My stepson was accepted to AWC and he did not go because he didn't want to be separated from his friends. It would mean going to a whole nother school. And, you know, we had, he ended up, he had a great education. He's, he's, you know, doing wonderfully. And I think there are ways that we can have all different learning styles. You know, if you have project-based learning, you can have, you know, different levels of having students, you know, demonstrate what they've learned and, you know, using different tactics so that students who are maybe a little more advanced are doing something else. And we, you know, they can still all work together. So I'm just really interested in looking at how, you know, we can have that model. And I agree with Vice Chair in terms of looking at Excellence for All. You know, if that's not the answer, because it has a lot of flaws, we should still look at it. And we should figure out And we should figure out what worked, what didn't work. And then how do we make our own, you know, excellence for all so that all of our fourth graders have rigor and have access? I think if you, if you look at, you know, college students, again, all different levels. But they're all working in the same class, you know, doing different things. I just think that, that it is possible. So I look forward to the working group taking a deep dive on this. And thank you for bringing this up to us Superintendent. So I don't know if there's any last words you want to say Superintendent before we move on.
No, I just want to appreciate the school leaders who are here today. I also want to appreciate Ms. Roberts and our entire team, our data team too, who's always behind the scenes doing the work. And crunching the numbers for us. So just thanks everybody for leaning into this moment. The pandemic has really brought us a lot of challenge, but it's also brought us some opportunity. To look deeper at ourselves and the opportunities that we give to kids. And certainly one thing we don't want to do is return to school and, and still give our kids less than what they deserve. And so thank you for the consideration and I hope that we can have these flexibilities so that we can create a more equitable system for our students.
Great, thank you Superintendent, and thank you to all my colleagues for your really thoughtful questions and comments. So we look forward to taking action on these recommendations at our next meeting. And we are now going to move on to public comments on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you Chair, we have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Is there any new business? So that concludes our business for this evening. The next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, February 3rd at 5:00 PM. At which time the Superintendent will present her preliminary FY '22 budget recommendation. If there is nothing further, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Oh, thank you, Dr. Rivera. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Sullivan, can you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, take care and be well, everyone.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes, good night.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, and thank you to the school leaders who joined us tonight and to the department heads who are working so hard on reopening.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Good night. Thank you, everyone for being this, here with us this late. We'll see you on February 3rd. Have a good night, stay healthy.
Night.